Okay, so welcome everyone to the January 6th, 2016 regular school committee meeting. Welcome back, school committee members and public from the winter break. I hope everyone's doing well. And we do have a decent sized agenda, though probably a little more manageable than in the recent past. The first order of business is citizens' comments and do you have citizens' comments?
No, no.
We have no citizens' comments?
Happy New Year.
So for those of you who haven't met him yet, this is Dr. Kurt Bates. He is our interim superintendent and we're very happy to have him here. Thank you so much.
So what do we call him?
We call him Kurt.
Just Kurt? No, Dr. Bates? No?
Professionally, Dr. Bates, but Kurt is fine.
If he's in trouble, we say Dr. Bates.
Yeah.
Can you make my mother?
Yes.
Okay, so Tom, our student rep, you got some good stuff for us?
Yeah, so the semester is winding down. I think it's in two weeks we have midterms coming up. So all the teachers are trying to get all their last minute tests and everything now before the end of the term. Projects and everything getting underway. Sports have been doing really well. Basketball had a tough game against Marlboro. I think it was the last week or the week before that they played really well. The team's been playing really well. Hockey's undefeated, I'm pretty sure. And they're off to a really good start. And I guess they went like one and five at the beginning of this year, or at the beginning of last year. Now they're nine and oh right now, I'm pretty sure. Swimming had a, having a meet today. Track has a meet tomorrow and Friday. Track, both boys and girls are both two and one. We're against Marlboro tomorrow, which should be exciting. And then Friday we're going up to Reggie's, which is a big indoor track in Boston, which is like one of the top in the country. So it's gonna be really fun for everyone to run there. Robotics, build season is almost starting. I think it's, you know, this Saturday or the next Saturday, build season starts. So that's when they start actually building the robot and they find out what the challenge for this year is. And all the robotics are really excited because up until now they've just been sort of playing around with their old robot and teaching the freshmen how to move around and do all the stuff that they need to do to get the robot working. So they'll find out what their challenge is coming up. Model UN is still trying to finalize some dates, I think, for, they want to host a middle school. Model UN meet at the high school. So for like all the middle schools in the district and then I think a couple others. So that should be exciting. And they're getting committee topics underway. We got a new water bottle filler thing, which is pretty cool. It's like one of those, they just stick the water bottle under it, fills it up. And I guess like we've had money for it since my freshman year, but we finally put it in this year and everyone loves that. The band had their winter concert the week before break. That went really well. I think it was one of the best winter concerts I've been a part of and band sounded pretty good overall. We got our new music and we're gonna be going to MICA. And I think it's March is when the next competition is coming up. So we play three pieces there. It's one of our choice, one that we can select from a list, and then one March. So that should be exciting too.
Good for you. So the water bottle dispenser went in, or the water dispenser went in?
Yeah.
Was that Mr. Kastner and his group?
It was like, I think, I think he must have had something to do with it. And then also the National Honor Society, I think like, I guess it must have been my sophomore year because I heard about it. But I think the National Honor Society, like that was their senior gift or something like that to the school. And so that's what they had and then they finally put it in this year, so.
Good, great.
How many are there?
Only one, but yeah.
It works.
It's good.
That's a start, right?
What is MICA?
MICA is the Massachusetts.
Instrumental Conductors Conference.
Oh, association.
Yeah, something like that. And there are, you go to the competition, you play your three pieces and each piece is given a different difficulty rating. I think it's like one to five. Five being like a collegiate professional level, four being like a high end high school, college level. And so you go and you play these three different pieces and different directors and conductors from around the country. Last year we had one from like University of Texas, University of Wisconsin, and like NYU or something like that.
Oh, what a school.
And like, so all these, all these, they'll grade you on your, on how you perform and they'll record. And so they'll record their comments. So once you get them back, you had to listen to their recordings and how they critique you. And then afterwards, after you play, you go into this other little room with the band. And one of the three people that judged you will go and give you like a private type of thing and go over the different critiques they have for the band and things that they heard, things that they thought we did well, that we could improve. And so that's always really good for the band to hear.
That's kind of exciting.
Yeah.
Good. Does anybody have any questions for Tom?
No, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay, next on our agenda, I'm gonna apologize to you upfront because I've seen you here a couple of years in a row and I, I know you're from Powers and Sullivan.
Richard Sullivan.
Pardon?
Richard Sullivan.
Richard Sullivan.
That's fine.
Is here to talk with us about the audit presentation and Heather Hughes, who is also the chair of the Audit Advisory Committee. So if you guys want to come on up to the table, don't, don't be shy.
So the Audit Advisory is our advisory? It's from the district or is it something else?
They, they look at the district, yeah. And Heather is the Fulton representative who's also serving as the chair. Right?
I'm gonna keep my chair up here, so.
No, no, it's just because Brad and the lungs, I can't get it right.
Yeah, please.
Taking my left hand right on there.
Thanks for coming.
My pleasure. Okay, again, my name is Richard Sullivan. I am the engagement partner to the district for the annual audit. Have been such for a number of years now. And what I just wanted to do for you is kind of walk you through the process, just so you understand what was looked at, what we did. Get a feeling for, you know, the results of the audit and also the results from the perspective of the financial side as well as there's a business engagement side that I'd like to share with you. So the way we do the audit, we break it down into two, two phases. I'm gonna apologize a little bit. I caught something just the other day.
Want some water? Got some cough drops?
I know, I've got about fifteen in my mouth.
Want some water?
Oh, good, thank you. So what we do is we come in the spring. And the idea behind that is that we, you don't want to bunch all the work up after year end. So it puts a lot of pressure on the staff here as well as our staff. And what the spring is, is we focus on things that I call not specific to June 30th. Meaning the reconciliations of cash, receivables, capital assets, all those things we do at year end, but don't have. We can audit a lot of stuff before that, such as we audit the single audit, which is the A133 piece. You guys receive over $500,000 worth of federal funds, so you need the A133 audit. We look at the budget. The budget is fairly easy, but there's also this compliance with laws and regulations that we have to look at. So we take a look at that. We do what we call our transaction testing, if not all of it. And what that is, it relates to looking at your revenue cycle, your expenditure cycle, your payroll cycle. We also look at journal entries. We test in that area between 25 and 30 selections. We go through your ledges and haphazardly pick some stuff to make sure the process is being followed correctly in terms of the design, i.e. is the procurement correct, is the invoice correct, has it been posted to the correct account? All those things. We do that for both revenue and for expenditures and for payroll. We get all of that done sometime in April, May, and/or June. Then we come in, in, let's see, when we come in this year, September, September 15th, we started the, what I call the final audit. And what that is, is we wrap up a lot of stuff. If we didn't finish what we thought we should have finished, they're phase one. But we start what I call walking down the balance sheet, looking at your cash. Your balance sheet is not complicated. There is, there's a very easy balance sheet to essentially audit because there's not a lot there. But you have cash, which is very liquid. You have capital assets. And you have like four or five significant liabilities, the two biggest being your net pension liability, which is new this year. I'll discuss a little later. Your OPEB liability, your warrants payable, your teacher summer pay payable. All those things we take a look at and we really nail those down. Meaning that while we, as auditors, we have materiality, I can share with you that we never have to say, oh, that's close enough. Because every time we've looked at the supporting documentation relative to the amount that was seen on the balance sheet, the numbers tied perfectly and the support behind it was sufficient to validate the amount that was on the balance sheet. The other thing that to know is when we're coming in, when we come in, in the, in the spring and we come in, in the fall, we're disruptive. We're the guys that are coming in for that two to three day period in the spring and that four to five day period in the fall. And let's face it, there's a lot going on in this operation. You guys, your people here, I should say, are here. Eight hours a day working and they're trying to fit in to take care of us. What I can share with you is I felt very good about the way we were treated. It's consistent the way we've been treated in the past. I call it being audit ready. Pat Maroni and George and the rest of his team, they pretty much have everything ready for us when we come in, both in the spring and in the fall. And it's very much appreciated. When you can walk in and a client has a stack of stuff this high, which is basically everything that you have on your checklist, you know this is probably gonna go pretty good. And I'll share with you that it did. When I think about, if you're gonna look at the reports, which are kind of boring, but if you look at the reports and you say, what's in there that wasn't in there last year? There was a new GASB that was implemented in fiscal 2015 called GASB 68. What that did is it, in the past, you had been contributing to the Worcester, I think it's Worcester County, did I get that right? Yeah, Worcester County Retirement System. And in the past, you'd, you'd get a letter saying, this is what you're supposed to pay, you'd pay. Well, what they did, GASB 68 said is, on the Worcester County Retirement System, which is about 54% funded if at best, they have a significant, what's called unfunded pension liability, meaning this big nut that has to be paid off by 2040 to be in compliance with national law. Your percentage of that big nut is now appearing on your balance sheet. It never had in the past. It had been pretty much fully vetted in the footnotes, meaning like there was disclosures showing all that stuff. Well, that took up about a page and a half of footnotes and nothing on the balance sheet. You now have it on the balance sheet and about four pages in the footnotes, plus additional required supplementary information at the back. For FY15 and all our clients, this was the big bang. This is the thing that was gonna happen. And I'll share with you a little bit when we get to the management letter, there's another one coming down the road. So when you think about what do we audit, I talked about what we did, but just to give you rough numbers. Cash, you had a little over $10 million worth of cash at the end of the year, which is very consistent with what's been in the past. $20 million in capital assets. There were no additions that required to be capitalized in FY15, which means you didn't really have any additions that met the threshold. You've got some bonds payable, which are small. We talked about the OPEB liability, the reason that liability for future benefits pays to retirees. Your pension accrue payout was $1.8 million. And then between the warrants payable and other accruals, $1.4 million. All those came out fine. The 100 to 150 transactions that we tested, we had not one single issue with any of the information that we received in terms of, was there something missing? Was there discrepancy in the posting? Was there discrepancy in the invoice pay? We had no issues with that whatsoever. The budget was done well. It was in compliance. It was accurate. Your federal grants, which I'll talk about a little later, but you spent $1.4 million. We tested special education, which is primary and major grant here always. We had no issues with that. We also do what's called cutoff testing. And what that is, is we look at expenditures made subsequent to year end to make sure none of those expenditures should have been posted into FY15. We had no issues with those whatsoever. So when you think about your balance sheet, except for the two big liabilities of pension and OPEB, really not much changed from FY14 to FY15. And the results of the audit were significant. Let's see what else I have here. Okay, just to give a little bit on the financial results, we kind of focus on the general fund because the special revenues and those don't really play into the, because they're all grant related. You had anticipated using about a million dollars worth of E and D in FY15. You did use some, but you didn't use everything. You probably used about $400,000 because things came in better than you expected. Revenues came in about $300,000 higher, with the contributions being transportation, that chapter 71 money that you get and your Medicaid reimbursement. So you did better in those areas. And as a result, anytime you have more revenue than expected, the use of E and D is decreased by one to one relationship related to that.
Can I interrupt you just one second?
Yeah.
Just to clarify that, make sure I have it right. Because I know this is a little confusing compared to our discussions from last year. So when he said we used a million dollars of E and D, but really.
You planned to use it.
Planned to use it. That's the whole replenishment cycle. He's talking the bottom line. We talked about that a lot last spring. You know, whether we, how much we appropriated to the budget versus how much would be, quote, we used a word for a lot, replenished last year. And that, that is what he's talking about specifically in a, in a, in a, in a talk. In past years, when we used a million dollars like we've been doing, that we talked about last year, we often ended up using zero.
Right.
When we, even though we built a million into the budget, ultimately we ended up using zero. Because, and the reason that was the case is because the E and D certification the following July is, was the same or similar than the previous July. So I just don't want to confuse, I just.
No, I understand.
I just don't want to confuse our budget talk about E and D versus the accounting.
Well, you know, I probably may have should have mentioned that only because, as you said, in the past, while E and D has always been a component of your budget, you never had to use it in the past. And this FY15 was the first time I saw it being used. So what that means is an accountant, it's an erosion of reserves. It means what you had now is gone and it's gone forever until you figure out a way to replenish it.
If you want to.
If you want to, which, I mean, you guys only get to keep 5%. So you're below 4% as it is. Your budget's pretty significant. You know, when you're looking at 2% or 3%, it's not a lot of money in case something happens that's bad. You know what I'm saying? From the standpoint of reserves.
So, so I have a question for you because I, I think this is probably something that others may share. Something bad, what could the something bad be? Because in my mind, if it's something that occurs within the buildings, there's insurance to cover, what's the something bad?
The things that, here's the things that I think about when I think about E and D. And are you familiar, from municipal side, are you familiar with free cash too? Okay, the, the, and I'm gonna use the free cash example right now. DOR highly recommends the free cash to be not used for structural elements of your budget. Structural elements are the things that are gonna be there year after year after year. E and D is to be used for one-time expenditures. Because if you're gonna use it, at least there's a, revenues there, you're spending it, but you don't have to worry about the following year. You guys don't have a lot of one-time expenditures when you think about that. In other words, your, your, the way your budget works from a district standpoint, and most districts are like this. It's a repetitive process where increments occur because of, you know, contracts and so forth. But for the most part, there's nothing in, in your budget that we, this is the only time we're gonna spend it and then it's gonna go away. So when you think about the use of E and D, in my opinion, and it goes to a structural element, you gotta think about how you're gonna fill that structural element in the following year. Because unless you decide to use E and D, but eventually E and D goes away. And then it has to roll it to the top and it's not gonna come from the state. So who else is left? The people that represent the communities in this world.
So the 5% that you mentioned though, that's the cap.
That's the cap.
Can get to, but that's not the recommended.
Oh geez. You know what they say at the city and town level? 12 to 15%.
For free cash?
For free cash. That's the GFOA.
You want to tell?
That's the GFOA way of saying, if you're, if you hit 10%, you're doing all right. Our well-heeled communities, because we're fortunate enough, we have about 25 AAA communities, they're all on the 14, 15, 22%. And so, and they can.
But that's municipalities, right?
But the thing, but the thing, the reason the 5% is, they don't want, the legislature said, we don't want the regional school districts to technically stockpile revenue, stockpile money.
Right.
Anything over 5% goes to reduce the assessment.
Right.
That's fine. But if, if I was thinking, and again, I'm a, I'm an accountant, I'm fairly conservative. But I would try to get as close to 5% as I could every year.
So to Lauren's point, I'm just curious, what, what have you seen being used for this one? So looking at.
In the past, I, in the past, I had not seen, I had seen E and D budgeted. But usually we've been okay with transportation and Medicaid reimbursements and there's always turnbacks. Like your budget last year was 47 million and change. All right, you turned back $370,000. I can't do the numbers in my head, but that's a very, very small percentage. $370,000 sounds like a lot. On a 47 million dollar budget, it's, it's.
You have a question, guys? I have another one about comparatives.
That, that was probably mine because I, I wanted to know how many regional districts.
We audit?
That, that you audit.
Seventeen.
And how many have.
And that's a rough number.
How many have 5%? Or what is the average?
Nobody has 5%.
So what's the average?
I would say it's close. Some of them actually have, may, there's a couple I had turned back. It's usually in the 4% range and a little bit above. Because, I mean, they realize that there's no value in having more than 5%. At least most of the districts I represent. So they tend to manage that. I'm trying to think. We have a couple of communities, western part of the state, I'm sorry, a couple of just western part of the state that are down by in the 1% range.
Some of the, some of the districts that we like to compare ourselves to have less than 4%.
Yeah.
A lot less.
Oh, I'm sure.
And in fact, that was one of the things that came up last year during the E and D discussion was, there are several, and I wish I had the spreadsheet with me because I went to the website, the state website and pulled it off to see what the percentage was. And there are many, many districts that do not come close to the 5%.
Well, I don't disagree with that, but again.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not trying to.
I mean, we have, I have a community that's less than 1%. And their budget process is brutal every year. And in fact, they usually can't get the communities to give them the budget the first time around. So they go, start going to 112 based on the prior year budget, which is what makes you do. It's a, it's a, it's a grueling process and they tend to be out in the western part of the state. Around here, people tend to get through it at a more expeditious way. But still, I can't think of any regional school district, except maybe one, that isn't what I would call their budget process pretty, pretty grinding. Because the communities are fighting themselves. I mean, there's, there's issues at the community level. So anything that comes more from the communities to the school, which is technically a good thing, takes away from the communities, which is technically a bad thing. So that's catch 22.
Right. Go ahead. The other thing is I thought I heard you mention that we in this district have a budget structure unlike most other districts. Is that what I heard you say?
Oh, I'm sorry if I said that. I didn't mean to indicate that. No, I do not. It's very similar. I mean, some people like to break out this Fed program a little bit different in the budget, but the budget process. You could pick up your financial statements, probably compare them very similarly to other regional school districts just by the, the categories and the structure in there.
Okay, thank you.
You, you do one thing, you just break it out by schools. Give up, like some of the school districts don't have as many schools. You do have line items for the various schools that you have.
Just a quick, I'm sorry. That's okay. I just have a clarification. This whole conversation started up because of E and D and then, and that we used it to.
Yep.
Offset the balance. So my question is, we offset the budget last year by $2.7 million, which wasn't assessed to the town.
FY16?
Uh, last year.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we didn't deplete E and D, but you're saying it did not deplete as much as we had expected when we did that offset?
That's what I was trying to explain. It's a different discussion. It's the same numbers, but it's a different discussion in auditing terms than we use in the budgeting terms. We, we're much more liberal with the term, I mean, how we use, we talk it as a direct revenue where it's really not. We, we essentially, as we talked last year, we budgeted and we assume it's spent on the budget. And then the E and D gets replenished by, by a lot of different things, but for simplicity reasons, turnbacks and additional revenue.
That's correct.
And then we see where that comes out at the end. So we consider it spent and then what, how do we make it up, so to speak? The replenish discussion. From a strict auditing point of view, they don't consider it spent until after they've looked at the turnbacks and the. So remember last year and I was saying, you know, this year we're having a few pressures, so we're not gonna replenish like we used to be able to. That's why he said that we use some. We're in past years when we did replenish. We started on the 2.2 million. We put a million in the budget. We ended up back at 2.2 billion. From an auditing point of view, we use zero.
Right.
But from a budgeting point of view, we used a million.
That's, that's fair. That's good. Yep.
Yeah. Because he looks at the whole picture. We look at the picture at different stages of the game when we're talking about budget. That's why I interrupted, which I apologize for.
No, that wasn't me.
But I thought it was an important clarification. We spent so much time last spring talking about it. I didn't want to confuse it here. I probably did, but I tried not to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just good for now?
Thank you.
Okay, so, so we talked a little bit about that. On a revenue side of it, interestingly enough, you can almost audit your revenue analytically. You receive 99.8% of your revenue from two sources, the state and the membership communities. There's a bunch of little odds and ends in there, but for the most part, it's very easy to tell if there's something going wrong there. That's why we do focus more attention on the expenditure side in terms of our testing. So what I wanted to leave you with, at least from the financial standpoint, we talked a little bit about the performance, was that from an audit standpoint, this was what I would call a good, clean audit. The only thing we really own here, we do help put together the financial statements because honestly, they're fairly complicated. I used to do SEC work and these are more complicated than that. And we own the opinion. It's two pages. And basically that opinion is called unmodified opinion, which is the best you can get. It basically says that everything in this report meets the standards of GAAP, meets the standards of the GASB and is in compliance with the way things should be presented in a financial statement. So that anybody in the, in the country could pick this up and know that the Silver Regional School District's numbers in here are accurate and can be relied upon. And the most, for you folks, the people who really rely on it are the rating agencies and the people who buy your bonds. Okay, so that's that. Just two more reports. There's the federal awards report. I kind of talked about that a little bit. It's our, as an audit firm, it's our largest exposure. If we mess up on the federal audit, not only could we get, have other agencies come after us, but we could also, peer review wise, it gets pretty complicated. I mentioned the district spent $1.4 million. We tested special education, which was over $800,000 worth of expenditures this year. We had three opinions in there, one on compliance with laws and regulations, one on the administration of federal grants, our major federal grants, and one on the report itself, which lists out the expenditures. We had no findings and no question cost. So that means that's as good as it gets for that report too. And finally, there's the management letter. I want to share with you, the management letter is thin. You use the expression thin to win, which is kind of indicative of what we've seen here. I had no issues with internal control here at all. We didn't see anything that warrants inclusion in the management letter. In my opinion, you know, the school demonstrates pretty decent business practice and processes. There are things that this school does in terms of monitoring student activities, monitoring athletic revolving accounts, monitoring cafeteria that other schools don't. Because Pat Maroni, she tends to go out there and be like an internal auditor, taking care of things along the way, which I appreciate. So we didn't really have any issues. I mean, we've had some comments in the past, but nothing popped up this year that we thought warranted. There is one informational comment in the management letter that relates to what's called GASB 74 and 75. Your OPEB liability has been on your books, I'm gonna say for five years. That liability represents the portion you should have put into a savings account, excuse me, some sort of plan that you hadn't put in. And your unfunded liability is pretty significant at this time. But the liability only represents, represents the portion you should have put in that year that you didn't. Because you've been going in on what we call a pay as you go type process. Like the net pension liability that Worcester County has, where they, we took your proportion percentage and now it's sitting on the balance sheet, I think it's $9 million, if I can remember correctly. $10.9 million. Your OPEB liability is gonna be shown the same way come fiscal 18. They're gonna, they're using the exact same format, the exact same process. So this GASB 68, which was the pension liability, was just teeing up what's gonna happen with GASB 74 and 75 comes around in FY18.
And what will the amount of that number likely be?
I can tell you what it was. Just give me one second.
And you need to put that in perspective for people.
On December 31st, 2013, that number was $45.4 million.
Can you define, just for people that might be watching this right now, what that unfunded liability would be made up of?
Yes, it's primarily what it is is that you have a plan, and I can't remember what the percentage is, but when a retire, a person retires from the district, they are entitled to receive health benefits in the future until they pass. They pay a portion of that. I can't remember what the percentage is. Is it 50%? I don't know what the answer is.
50% for retirees?
Okay, 50%. So that other 50% has to be funded by the district. Now, you pay that 50% now just by writing a check for everybody who's receiving the benefits now. The GASB has said, and I think they're right on this one, is that, well, if I'm a person who's just starting in the district and I go through and actually become eligible to retire, there is a cost associated with me working in the district now. That, that future liability that you're gonna pay for me, I'm actually earning, even though you don't see it. And what the, the GASB is saying is, an actuary should come in, look at your population of your employees, look at the ages, the probability of retirement, male, female, all those things, and say, there's a cost associated with Richard Sullivan working in this district. And that cost equals X amount for this year. So you're supposed to put the amount you're paying for the retirees now and the amount for Richard Sullivan in the future. That's the portion that's not being paid right now. So the difference between that, the part that should be put aside for the future and the part that's being paid now is a liability on your books as it stands. The GASB is saying, we're gonna take the whole thing and put it on your books. Because that's, that's, that's really not telling the true picture of what this is all about. And that's the idea behind GASB 45 or OPEB liability. That there's a, there's this hid, not hidden cost. It's a cost associated with a person being employed that's gonna receive a benefit in the future. And that, and that, they're saying that cost should be reflected now in the financial statements, not when you pay it 30 years from now. Does that help?
Hmm?
And is that law or is it?
It's not law. What it is, is the policy of the school. I mean, from a standpoint of financial reporting, it's, if you want to call it the law, yes. I mean, from a standpoint of financial reporting, it's, if you want to call it the law, yes, but there's nothing mandating you to make those payments. It's just that the, the GASB, who is, uh... It's underneath the iron that goes GAAP and GASB, but they all end up rolling up into a way the presentation of the financial statements. The, um, the GASB has said, and I think they're right, that you have to reflect this in your financial statements. And if you didn't, I'd be probably doing a qualified or a adverse opinion, because it wasn't going to be there, because how would a financial statement be, represent, say fairness or be accurate with a forty-five million dollar liability? So that, that's, that's really what it's all about, because in the beginning, when GASB came out, they said, well, what if we don't do it? And we said, well, you know, you'll get an adverse or a qualified opinion. Well, what does that mean? Probably means about half a basis point or one basis point on your wants. Easy, if they want to even do it for you. So that's, that's the reality of it.
But you don't have to fund all of it at once. I mean, you can work towards it, right?
That's right.
We can't fund all of it.
Let me tell you, let me tell you what our clients are doing. We've had some school districts have set aside what I would call symbolic amounts, okay, from twenty thousand dollars to a hundred fifty thousand dollars. And on a forty-five million dollar liability, which is probably resembles a similar districts, that's a symbolic amount. But what our, what our municipal clients are saying is that, you know, if we can't do it now and fully invest in it, they all have various ways of paying on their pensions, because of, whether you're part of Millsacks County, you have your own pension plan, you're part of Worcester County. Between two thousand twenty-eight, two thousand forty, because that's the, the range that you have to pay off the retirement, your stream of payments is going to go towards that. When you become fully funded, people are saying, we'll take the rest of that stream and put it towards OPEB. And it's kicking the can down the road, but at least that's the basic plan they have. In other words, this cost that you have embedded in your financial statements for pension will never go away, because it should then be diverted to deal with OPEB.
And you keep using twenty forty, why?
Well, the original date for payment of, I'm sorry, fully funding of pension plans was two thousand twenty-eight. Was it two and a half years ago, three years ago, the state allowed that mandate to go up to two thousand forty? And I don't know what Worcester County elected, because you had the option to stay at two thousand twenty-eight or go to two thousand forty or take anything in between. And I can't remember what Worcester County did.
Okay, now you're using the word mandate.
That's, this pension funding is a mass general law. There's no options you have. It has to be done.
And this is different than OPEB?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I was missing. All right.
And where do the seventeen other districts that you...
They're pretty much the same way as you are. Pretty much the same. I just did a little district, finishing up a little district in the west part of the state. They had twenty thousand dollars.
So do we have some...
We have a hundred and fifty.
Well, that's an OPEB. What about the pension?
No, the pension is just your appropriation. You, you send money to Worcester County and they take care of it.
Oh, so we're all set there?
You should be all set there.
But we own, we own a percentage of their liability.
Yes, you do. The problem, the problem with Worcester County, if I...
We are.
I can't remember what it is, but Worcester County's retirement system has not performed well. And as a result, yeah, here we go. They're at forty-seven point nine percent of what's called the net position as a percentage of the total liability, which means if their assets are only forty-seven point nine percent of their liability, they've got a lot of work to do.
How do we get out?
Is that because they're just started or they're...
Worcester County's been around for a long time. I don't, I can't comment on Worcester County's management of investments, but, you know, there are other communities in the fifty threes and fifty fours, and there are other communities in the eighty fives and eighty sixes.
Who want to be there? Who are those?
Yeah, those are the, uh, well, usually the, these tend to be, I was going to say, they tend to be their own, uh, a community with its own retirement system. A Milton, a Wellesley, a Belmont.
Is that riskier?
No, it's just they elected, they do it themselves first, many, many years ago.
Hundred and three or hundred and four retirement systems in the state. Any town that doesn't have their own...
I think Millsacks County is about fifty-four percent. Is that about right?
Has to have the county they're in, since we're headquartered in Worcester County.
Have you always been with Worcester County?
Yes, because we're headquartered in Worcester County, even though part of us is in Millsacks.
There's a, I think you said a hundred and three or something like that?
It used to be a hundred and four. Somebody just shut theirs down.
Okay, because I think you're right. I just looked at the report today, and I think there's a hundred and three communities and in school districts.
So is our OPEB with them also?
No, 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 totally different.
Are we funding that ourselves or is that...
Yes, it's on our books. That's our debt. We own our portion of their debt in the book. All the small Worcester County towns are in, like Bolton and Lancaster, Worcester County, I would totally all on debt.
So, unless anybody else has any more questions. Heather, do you have anything you want to add, having served on the, with the group?
Two, two meetings, yes, just to put that in perspective here. Now, we, so we have already had the pleasure of...
We had a good meeting.
Yeah, reviewing the information. I think, you know, fundamentally, nothing has changed from the prior year outside, you know, you know, two liabilities really, four in total. And I think generally speaking, the practices have been found to be sound. I also feel like looking at, you know, the controls that they have in place, there's not only the controls, you know, are testing properly, but they're not recommending any additional controls. They feel like they're in place and they're not. We even asked about comparisons. Do we have enough controls? You know, how does this compare to other districts? And they seem to be in more, yeah, very solid. So I think, you know, looking at that and, you know, obviously, these guys are doing work with seventeen other districts and, you know, they have an obligation to their own standards. So it makes sense to accept the findings. And then my own perspective is that we move forward, you know, we don't have a contract in place, you know, for this last round. So we need to go through, you know, another vetting process with this organization and then, you know, other, put it out to bid. So I'd like to get started on that, because you heard at the beginning, the process really starts around April. And so that doesn't give us a lot of time to, you know, go out and get some goods. So I think, George, the last time we met, we were talking about maybe getting the last, you know...
I, you know, I didn't know our contract was up. I thought we had one more year, but that's all right.
Oh, I thought this was the last.
Did you know? I don't know.
I'm pretty sure it's up.
Okay.
I think this is the last.
That's fine. I believe you.
You're just having so much fun with that.
I don't tell you anything. I will always go down kicking and scratching. I'm going to throw a hat in the ring all the time.
Well, how long is a contract usually?
They last between, usually three and five years, and they, and they're often renewed. We did go out to a full-fledged bid the last, for this last contract.
Three years ago, right.
Three years ago, we did a full-fledged bid with maybe four firms bidding on it, five. And we were, we happened to be the low bidder, which not always the case. So you might want to consider that. Done this three years ago.
Well, I don't even know yet, but we will. So when does all that occur? When does, when does that, and how does that occur and...
Well, I mean, we put, it, it's not as formal of a bid process as I recall, so that's why I didn't provide it, because we didn't have as formal a bid process. We just, uh, we did get, we did solicit from any firm interest, because the work is pretty standard as to what has to be done, so...
Would the advisory be involved?
Sure, yeah.
Have they been?
What's that?
Have they been? Is that typical? I mean, were you on the committee before or is it a short year?
This is the first. This is the first.
But this is the first year. Sorry, answering.
It's been around for many years, but it's, there's been turnover and some people coming and going, so it's...
It has been every year since I've been here. The ten years I've been here, the Audit Advisory Committee has met in some form at least once every...
Once.
Yeah, not, generally not more than once or twice tops, yes, twice maybe, once or twice over the years that I've been here.
We need more than that now, right?
They certainly have.
Because it doesn't mean to, the months doesn't make sense to me.
We met twice. It has the authority to advise the school committee on, on the scope of an audit and perhaps to advise on auditors. And it also has the opportunity to make a public presentation on its opinion of the state of the, um, finances of the district. Probably the appropriate place to do that might be Trittown. So those are things that the Advisory Committee hasn't necessarily taken the initiative to do, but I think current members will have some interest in taking...
Why wouldn't we present at Trittown before we'd presented the school committee?
No, no, I mean, an independent presentation to the public. And it seems to be the most likely public audience is the Trittown.
I understand, independent.
The Audit Advisory Committee being independent of the school committee.
They're not, they're not school committee members. They're, it's, it's one person.
It's a community about a district agreement. So it's sort of a town watchdog on the district and basically to sort of monitor the audit process.
It's not a subcommittee, it's a school committee.
So, so...
What they're putting out now, right? You're part of the committee?
Well, we got, we kind of got, yeah, and I think, um...
So there's one member for each town. We've got the Bolton representative present. I'm the school committee representative, and then there's a Stowe representative. And it happens there's a vacancy for Lancaster at the moment.
So I, so my question to you is, do we keep this audit advisory in place for the balance of the year and begin to do whatever we need to do for a search now?
I would recommend it, and I would, are you interested as a member of the committee?
Yeah, and whatever, um, you know, whatever we can do, however you want us to do, we can do the legwork and then present out or, um, you know, whatever function or fashion you think is appropriate for us to be utilized, you can do that. But either way, my recommendation would be, after this, you technically don't have a contract, so whether you want to continue with the same firm or, you know, do the right due diligence would be my recommendation, just to go out for RFP, whether formally or informally, just so that you have the logic or rationale behind why you might go with the same firm again. I would recommend getting started on that now, because technically speaking, we need to get this process started, the actual audit.
For the spring, right?
Yeah, starting in the fall.
So, so can, can, do we need to vote to ask the Audit Advisory Committee to continue to do that work? Or are they just in place and they go ahead and do the work?
They can take the initiative. I think you can welcome it.
Well, we're welcoming it, I think.
I do have a question. Yeah, I have a new guy on the block question here.
You can't keep using that.
As long as, as long as I got it going. So the question that I have is, now you've presented the, the audit findings.
Yes.
And I'm, I go back, and this is just so I understand the process. I go back to two thousand and two, two thousand and three, when, when everything kind of went wrong and we ended up going into receivership.
Yep.
There was an audit that had taken place, according to everything I've read historically, and it was okay. Everything was fine. And then everything fell apart.
We didn't do that audit.
Yeah, but, but like, that's a good thing. But my question is, so what is it that, when the audit, did somebody miss something in that audit that should have been taken? Or are you auditing for something that's different as far as process, you're doing stress tests, et cetera, whatever you want to call it? But there's still elements that can still, because I think when we all hear audit,
Yep.
we're all thinking, you know, everything is absolutely hunky-dory. There's no questions, no concerns, no nothing. And it's just straightforward. Everything's lean, mean, there's no fat, there's nothing. And, and I know that that's not the case, but could you talk to the extent of how something like that could happen, but still in audit?
Yeah, and well, I, I can't speak for the other audits, because everybody has their own process. But if I remember correctly, what was going on is that there was money being used for the budget to fund the capital project.
Right.
And, um, and it was, it was being, I, I can't use the word manipulated, but it just, it, it's the kind of thing that I can share with you that we take a look at, because you have to pay attention to the interaction between funds. Because we just can't look at the general fund and assume the capital project fund is correct. We can't look at the capital project fund and assume the special revenue fund is correct. So what we tend to do is we just kind of look at the balancing of the whole thing. And that, that deficit that was created was because expenditures were flowing through a fund. And I'm not really sure how the revenues, our future revenues, were being presented.
Part of it was school choice, I know. That was, that was involved, per outflow versus inflow.
It wasn't, I don't know.
Some failure of reporting.
Actually, opposite of you saying, I think it was capital money that was being used to support the...
That's right. It was capital money being used. So what happens, bond proceeds have come in, there's money sitting there supposed to go to a capital project. That was being siphoned out to use for the general fund. Thank you, George. And that, that is something, I'm sorry?
That makes sense to me.
And that is something that, I can't say how it wasn't caught, to be quite honest with you. Because...
But there's something that should be, though.
Well, it's for timely, either.
I, I, maybe not. But what I can share with you is this.
The timeframe that we have right here.
We spent a lot of time talking about E and D earlier, right? So if you are using other funds to pay for expenditures, you got to match up your membership assessments, your state allocations, your use of reserves, and then compare that to all your expenditures. Well, if your expenditure is significantly higher, where's the other funding coming from?
Yeah.
So I don't know if they had what I would call a do-to-do-from on the other side there. But to suggest even if there was, you have to ask the question, how is that going to be paid back? So I, I can't really comment. I, I don't know the answer to your question.
So my question is, the audit that you did, that should, in theory, catch something like that that actually did happen?
We would catch that. It could be an issue though, George, because I don't know what the timing of those audits were, if they were occurring over a year or more after.
I wasn't here, but I was late.
Yeah.
Neither, we came in after. I think that fellow's name was here, who took over. Antonelli.
John Antonucci.
Antonucci. But, um, that, that, if the audits were not being conducted on a timely basis, you could go a whole fiscal year, going into the next fiscal year, four or five months before you even figure out what's happened.
Plus, our controls are a lot different than they were then, too, because, I mean, I wouldn't know how to do that. I don't, I, I don't know how with our controls in place now, we could...
George, that's not what I'm implying.
I mean, I really can't fathom how it could happen, but I think maybe some of that's because our controls are in place now. Because in those days, the one person had signature authority, transfer authority, all that. Like, I don't have any signature authority anywhere, whereas the person in this relative's position had that. They also, you know, so it is, it is really weird. I mean, the question is good.
If you have that much authority, you can move money in the banks, move money on the books, take care of, basically, you can make it work no matter what.
But I still, but I agree with, with Dick said. I can't imagine if anything, the way I understand what happened, it happened, it could, it could survive an audit. I just don't see how it could survive an audit.
I don't, I don't even remember. Did they catch it eventually or did we, did it just blow up?
They blew up.
Well, it blew up and then they found it out.
Yeah, right. And I believe, and I could be wrong on this, I believe the audits for a couple of years on a date, but I could be wrong.
If that's the case, this could have gone on, unmonitored, and it really, I don't, I'm never going to...
If you're doing things where your books aren't exactly where you want them, you're probably going to put your auditors off. It's human nature to think so. I mean, that's why timely audits are critical in any municipal, you know, organization.
This one was pretty timely. Like, I mean, we're here in September.
Yeah, no, this is really timely, yeah. I mean, as long as you're in within six, five months.
Right.
Okay.
And based what I read, there was a misappropriation or misreporting of school choice at that time.
You, can I, I think, just to add a little advice. I think it would be, the, this, this committee, this board is responsible for hiring the auditor. The Advisory Committee is responsible for offering a, a process. So if I'm going to suggest to you, I think you should authorize them to begin the process, to do the vetting, and then present to you their findings and you approve it.
Right, right.
Okay, all right.
So you do it that way?
Yeah, they would do the vetting.
Yeah, but I would think you should have a vote to let them do the vetting.
Oh, well, thank you so much.
I mean, I'm just, I, I'm not good at this, but that's what I'm thinking.
Absolutely. That was the question.
You should pay them for soup, pounds of salad.
Well, we can't do that yet, but we'll definitely invite you in, I would assume.
We'll happily participate.
All right, so we're going to do, when is it?
Before you have the vote, what else are you guys working on? Was it just going to be this vetting?
What?
Do you get, do you have the advisory committee, do they have anything else on schedule, or is it, they're just going to do the vetting?
This is their role.
Yeah.
So that, would you like, do you have anything else on your list?
No, well, I'm just wondering.
So one of the things is actually to consult with the likely or the actual auditor to, you know, if they care for one reason or another about the scope of the audit, say, we want you to pay attention to X, whatever X might be, and, and, you know, cause, cause interest to be, um, spent on, on specific topics.
If you have a, can I just, just say it one more time? If you have an audit committee that, this particular audit committee, while we get together, it's, it's been very fluid, maybe the best word I can use. And if you decide that you're going to have a, you know, people are going to be there and they're going to be there year in and year out, what we usually do with our audit committees is we meet with them in the spring. We talk about our audit plan. This is how we're going to go about it, and they usually bless it. And, you know, and they, they report to the board of selectmen and or, actually, this is the only audit committee I have for school districts. So they report to the all of them in a board of selectmen, this is what's going to happen. And then we would come in at the conclusion of the audit and do another presentation before the audit committee, similar to what we did with you guys. And you talk about the results and the things we did. Influencing that at times is, maybe you have some concerns. And, you know, we either, we say we can do that, or maybe sometimes the concerns, I'll be honest with you, they turn into special projects, because there's only so much the audit is supposed to do, and then there's these, common sense tells you what's a project and what's the title of the audit. Okay, just pure and simple. So that's how we've involved ourselves with audit committees, where you have the pre-planning, you decide, these are areas that can you take a look at? I would say ninety-nine percent of the time, we say, yeah. If there's another one percent where they really want us to look at something, that's a special report, that's a different venue, but you can still do it based on with the approval of the governing board. And then we meet at the end, just like we do this year. That's how it tends to work.
Okay. So why would we, why would we then move forward and say, we really want you to look something, because my impression is... So why would we, why would we then move forward and say, we really want you to look at something, 'cause my impression is that you really did look at something.
The only thing that I've ever had happen is some, you know, sometimes somebody's concerned about something, finds out about something, it could be somebody talking to somebody. And, um, you know, like, you know, if somebody knows somebody works in the cafeteria and wonder why, you know, plates of inventory is missing or something like that, I'm just.
So you took more like a forensic sort of thing?
No, no, just like, when's the last time we looked at this? You know, 'cause we tend to cycle things, and if they say, gee, we'd like it to look at that, we put it on our agenda.
So is it fair to say you're spot checking?
Yes, that's, we call them site visits.
Right. Okay.
But spot checking is a good word, too.
Okay, so I think people understand what that means.
Okay.
Do we vote on a committee that's not?
No, we already have the committee in place.
That's, well, no, well, we didn't seat this committee, the towns did, correct?
Right.
So I don't know how we can vote on asking them to do something, they're not our, they're not ours.
Kurt?
But he is.
Could you please weigh in on this before anyone else jumps in?
But he, you voted on him. So, but his contract is up.
Right.
So somehow you have to say, if they're gonna vet, we either have direct them or advise them to do it.
To start the vetting process.
Advice.
And conversely.
You're advising them.
So perhaps.
And conversely, as an advisory committee, the school committee can say, okay, we take your advice, and maybe or maybe not. The school committee follows that advice as an advisory committee.
That's right.
Well, that's a little wrinkle.
And we respect your decisions.
And we're, that's a little bit of a wrinkle mark that I'm trying to get to the basics here. Did you have another question?
I would say, yeah, I think perhaps the, the way to go about it is to ask our representatives of this committee to, to move this process forward.
Hmm, I don't know that he can do that, because he's not the school committee, he, it is a, it's.
So we should then take a vote to make, we make a motion to authorize them to start the vetting process.
Exactly. Exactly. Exactly.
And if we don't need the vote, it's done.
And if we don't need it, we've done it.
Overkill.
Yeah.
Right, so does anybody want to make a motion to have the audit advisory committee begin the vetting process for a new, um, or the same auditing firm?
Um, sure, and I'd like to have a friendly amendment in collaboration with the administration to start, uh, the process.
With administration.
With, with?
So with, with George and superintendent to, you know, begin the process of putting out to bid the auditing process in collaboration with advice from the advisory committee.
So do you wanna make a motion to do that?
So is that, is that, is that a capturable motion, what I just said?
Sure.
Was it? Could you repeat it, please?
So I move, the school committee, um, invite the, um, audit advisory committee and the administration to, um, collaborate and put out to bid, um, um, audit, um, request for proposals.
It, yeah, it doesn't have to be a formal, uh, because it's not subject to, um, bidding law, so, but yes, uh.
Sure.
So you're gonna vet it for it?
Yeah, that's good.
Why isn't it subject to bidding laws?
I don't think it's that, it's exact.
It's a low dollar amount.
No, it's exact, it's the service, it's the professional.
Okay, so we actually do have a motion, I think we need to read it back, because there's a lot of talk. Could you read it back?
Um, that the school committee authorizes the audit advisory committee to begin the process of vetting a new, um, district audited firm.
In collaboration with the administration.
Okay, in collaboration, okay.
Thank you.
Is there a timeline for this?
Okay, do we have a second?
New means without around, I just wanna say that.
Second, okay. You.
New contract.
New contract. New or existing, Kathy amended to new or existing.
I'm just protecting my interest here.
Okay, now we can take, um, discussion, Lynn.
Is there a timeline for this?
Is there a timeline for this? Should there be a timeline for it?
I mean, when does the contract end?
This is not.
One of the final audits.
This is it.
Just about done, we have a couple of small aspects left to go, the student activity.
End of year, student activity, end of year report.
Go ahead. We can do it in a few.
Sure.
So do we wanna put, actually, do, that's a good point, do we wanna put a, a range on here of when this would, when would this typically be done, Mr. Auditor?
If you were gonna make a really good selection, you'd make it at least by April, middle of April.
Okay.
'Cause that gives the, the audit firms usually don't show, and even if you went a little later, it's okay, but the audit firms, they would wanna know and begin the process of either, um, of preparing to come in between May and June.
Okay.
So they want them selected by April?
So.
And then end of April would be fine, middle of April would be better.
So we would like the audit advisory committee to begin the vetting process and provide us with a field of vendors by early April, March?
Yeah. What you wanna do is get the RFP out, have a date that's due by, say, March thirty-first, evaluate the RFPs, if you wanna do interviews, you can do them in April, and then.
Okay, so the timeline works?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's how it works.
So Heather and Mark, does that make sense?
It does.
Okay, thank you. I think we need to vote. Okay, so all those in favor?
Second? Neil seconded.
Neil already seconded? Any more discussion, and now's the time? No? Run away from it? Okay, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and George, thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you, you too.
Heather, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Heather.
Appreciate it.
I don't blame you.
Okay, go through it. Actually, that was probably one of the more robust audit discussions we've had. The, the next item under new business is the school committee meetings, um, and we've got to reschedule a couple, so, um, we're looking at moving four meetings, January twenty-seventh, February tenth, February twenty-fourth, and March ninth, which are Wednesdays, to the next day in the, in that respective week. So we would be looking at meetings on January twenty-eighth, February eleventh, February twenty-fifth, and March, March tenth for regular meetings. And we are gonna have to vote on that. Uh, one of the things I want to also suggest is, um, we have that February tenth meeting, um, which we're now gonna, for the regular meeting, which is going to move to the February eleventh meeting, but I'd like to reserve that February tenth date for the communication forum discussion with the staff. So.
I'm not gonna be here on the tenth.
You're not gonna be here on the tenth?
And I'd like to participate in that, but if I'm the only one.
Well, if you're the only one, I know. Um, it's kinda tough right now finding other meetings, but how do people feel about the moving these, um, the regular meetings one day in the respective week to that Thursday from Wednesday?
Anything else, just.
It works? Good?
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, so I think, Alita, we probably need to vote on these since we're changing the calendar. So, would you?
I move that we move the regularly scheduled school committee meetings of January twenty-seventh, February tenth, February twenty-fourth, and March ninth, to January twenty-eighth, February eleventh, February twenty-fifth, and March tenth.
Second.
And our second is Kathy, any discussion on this? And all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much.
And he's gonna show up on the calendar.
Yeah, Alita's gonna update the calendar for us. Okay. So now I wanna talk about the, the communication forum, which is the next item on the agenda. This is, um, last year it was started, it was the staff roundtables that we did at the high school and the media center. It was well-attended last year, uh, and then I, I think there were several people afterwards, staff members that had mentioned, geez, that had they realized what we were gonna be doing, that they would like to attend as well. And I know that initially it was, it was supposed to be, or it was intended to be, an every-other-year event, but I think this year is probably a good time to, to go ahead and meet with those folks again. It will be, um, we would invite, um, teachers and staff from around the district to meet with school committee members. And what we did last year, the intent was share, um, three things that you, um, you think we do really well, um, in the district, and share three areas where you think we could, um, make some improvements, and what would those be? So it is one of the commitments that we made at the beginning of the year and our, um, school committee goals, to ask for feedback and open the lines of communication with, um, the staff. So I think, um, it's probably something we could look at doing again this year, uh, and I guess the question is, I know that Kurt can't be there for it, I hope you're okay with us meeting.
Well, Kurt and I can't be there, why are you doing?
Well, certainly Kathy Codyanne can't be there, then we shouldn't do it at all.
That's okay.
But how is that a February tenth meeting date for others? Is there anybody else that has a conflict? No? Um, I think.
So you're talking tenth and eleventh, though?
Yep. Yes. So Kathy, um, the challenge that we're having is trying to find a date.
Don't I'm just being a jerk?
No, you're not, you would like to be there, and you have every right to want to be there, and we would like you to be there.
I'd rather Kathy there than me from Lancaster, because I'm on the end of my three-year term, so I'm moving out.
That could be a problem.
She's in her first year, so in my opinion, from a Lancaster representative standpoint, I'd rather Kathy there than me.
And you could always fill her in on what you learned.
And that's what I, my, my point would be, that there'd be information forthcoming that we would wanna react to. So that, just having the information, and I'll just.
I most likely can't be there, too, sorry.
Excuse me?
I just said, I most likely cannot be there, too.
Okay, so do we want to, um?
Is another, is a Tuesday opportunity possible, maybe a week later, is, is it?
That's vacation week.
Okay, so how about if we do this? If, um, I'd really like to wrap this up, but if we can't, Alita, can you pull together maybe a couple other dates for us? Maybe there's an alternative to Lynn's Point Wednesday? And it's not a regular school committee meeting, so as much as we would love to have Kurt there, if he can't make it, it's, it's not a deal breaker.
What about the third?
Of February? How does the third look, people?
Oh, well. Don't worry, just do it, just do it.
Why can't you do Wednesdays?
'Cause, no, no, it's just a period of time where I'm not gonna be around.
Oh, well, sorry.
I, um, I rearranged based on Thursdays, I rearranged some things off of Thursdays that are now on Wednesdays.
So if five of us can meet and two of us can't.
Or March, or March second.
March second?
Yeah.
I don't know if we wanna push it out that far, do we?
Either January? Well, not to give them enough time to plan their schedules, too.
Right, we need to give them enough time to plan.
'Cause they're gonna all probably get, have to get daycare and.
Okay, why don't we do this? Because we're not gonna be able to solve this right now, why don't we revisit this next week? And then, if everyone could send their, I can't make any meeting on this night availability for, um, February.
To the meeting during the night, it's not after school?
It's.
We ask, they come back?
It's in the evening.
Oh, okay.
Last time we did it right after school, and then remember, we went in that little room and we had pizza and we had our regular meeting after the forum?
After.
Yeah.
Kathy did it at four o'clock.
Let me see if I can change.
So I could do.
We did it right after school, so that we didn't have to make the teachers all stay, and remember, we had that little side room and we did pizza and salad.
Yeah, and I could totally do, I could do any of those days after school.
Yep, you're right. We had our regular school committee meeting after the forum.
Yeah.
A brief, yep.
So you could do it on Thursday? We had a brief meeting right after.
So if we do it on the tenth, Neil, after school, you can make it?
Mm-hmm.
So if we're, if we're back to the ten?
Mm-hmm.
We, we have Neil back.
Or the eleventh.
Well, you could do it on the eleventh.
Hold on, one at a time, I can't, I can't follow it all, say it.
Oh, okay, so we do it. Do it on the eleventh, right after school?
And then have the regular meeting right after.
And then have the regular meeting after that.
And that way, Dr. Bates could be there if he wanted to be.
Yeah. Okay, hold on a second.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, we're to the eleventh now?
Yeah. Of February.
Back to the regular meeting date. It's a very unscheduled meeting, so we just get our, the lunch is big.
So if we do it right after school?
Mm-hmm.
Or when we start, like, three o'clock?
Well, I'm not the lunchpin, is anything, if I can't make it, I can't make it.
Four o'clock?
Yeah.
Yeah, school doesn't get out till like three fifteen in the element.
Oh, that's right, so start at four. Okay, can you guys do that?
Four, six. What's the date under our session?
February eleven.
February eleven.
Yep.
Four, six.
Alita, can you send a reminder so that we have all those dates?
And should we vote on that, 'cause that's actually gonna be a completely new meeting, too.
We absolutely have to vote on it.
Does that work for you, Neil?
Hey, I need to juggle some things, so I have to get back to it.
Kathy, are you available?
I am.
Do you guys wanna vote on this tonight?
Sure.
I, I wanna get the information out to the staff and give them a few weeks to plan for it.
Okay.
All right, so we're looking at February.
I move that we make the communication forum on February eleventh at four o'clock at the high school.
Second.
Well, do we have a second? Yeah, we do, here, thank you. Um, any discussion? No?
Yeah, where is it, and how are you gonna get the word out?
So it would be in, probably in the media center again at the high school. And Alita is going to, um, create, uh, I'm gonna write a quick introductory paragraph, we've already talked about this, Alita's gonna send out a, um, a Google survey. Do you wanna talk about it?
I'm just gonna send out a, a Google survey that will have, that all they have to do is put in their name if they wanna attend, the school they teach at, and their grade level. So that way, Maureen can look at the list and try to make sure that, that, that everybody is represented a different, Bolton's not all together. She'll separate the, the grade level so that each school committee gets a perspective of everybody, of every town, so, you know, Kathy will be able to hear from Bolton people, too, and Stowe people, not just, in all grade levels, which is what we did last year, my, but we did the survey this year because, Mr. Dr. Bates and Maureen aren't familiar with names, so.
So it just gives us the data?
Yeah, that's all it is, just.
Which I think is a great idea, so thank you for that. Okay, so.
Are you advertising pizza? We didn't do pizza last time.
We didn't do pizza, that's a difference.
We didn't do pizza last time.
No, that was just for the school committee meeting and, no.
Okay, that's because we were late.
No, it's four o'clock, it's, it's early enough.
Yeah, okay, yeah. We can do, I can have the, the reps do cookies or whatever.
Right, right, and those are details we can hammer out later on. Okay, so, it's February eleventh, four o'clock at the high school in the media center. We will get the information out, find out who's coming, um, I will get you more data and information when we get closer. We've already had a first, um, someone's made a motion, we've already had a second. We've had discussion, does anybody have anything else they wanna add? Boy, is everyone chatty tonight? No? Okay, all those in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you, thank you, everybody. Phew, okay. And, uh, I think the last item on the new business is our school committee's school tours. So, um, right before the break, and then yesterday, I had the opportunity to accompany George and Dr. Bates to each of the schools. And it was, eh, a really great experience, and I know that another one of our goals this year is for us to get into the schools. Respect the fact that we have all been incredibly busy, um, since before the school year started. But now that we're into twenty sixteen, and we've had a couple of requests from the schools, I think it's time for us to really make a concerted effort to get in, to meet with, with the administration, to just tour the schools. The thing I came away with from every single one of those, and you guys have all been there and you've done this, is that's why we're doing what we're doing, that's why we put the time in, that's why we, we do the amount of work that we do. And it's exciting, so I would like to challenge every one of us, including myself, to get into at least two schools in a town, towns other than yours. So Bolton reps would at least go to at least one school in Stowe and one school in Lancaster and then obviously similarly for the other towns' reps. Does that make sense? You're all adults and I'm not gonna tell you when you have to do this by, but I would really love to encourage you to, to get a tour in, a couple of tours in before February break. Yeah?
It would be helpful to know what days the principals see as optimal for us to visit.
So, to that point, Alita and I talked about that today. And Kurt, I don't know if you want to weigh in on this or if you want Alita to handle the coordination of it, but anything you've got, jump in.
If it's possible, I'd like to accompany you.
Wonderful.
So if Alita can make up a spreadsheet and timeframe, I think we can try to work it out.
Yep, I have Dr. Bates's calendar, so if anybody wants to email me and say, how does this date look and what school you want to go to, I'll check with the principal to see if that's a good time for them.
Or does it make more sense to do it the other way and ask the principals what's better for them?
You can ask them.
That would be my preference and, and I also, I mean, there are seven of us. Are we gonna have seven separate visits?
No.
I don't know what your calendar looks like.
We can coordinate, so you two do it together and you want to keep the tour roughly to about an hour.
Sure, so I think however we can coordinate that, but I think to start with the principals and get, there may be a day of a week, there might be a block of time.
Right, so I'll coordinate with, with Dr. Bates's schedule and the principal's, what.
And then let us know.
And then I'll send it out to all you guys and say, who wants to sign up?
Yep, that would be great.
Here's, here are the dates of the tours.
And this is what schools they'll be, who's coming?
Right, exactly.
Is there, I mean, if we all show up, is that gonna be inconvenient?
I think it'd be great.
Well, they're all seven in one day, do you?
Oh, no, 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 not all seven, so.
Not all seven, that's what you're asking, right?
Yeah, no.
At what point, I mean, is, is three a good number, is?
Oh, you mean the number of school committee reps?
Well, yeah, cause I'm thinking it is, if all the seven of us show up at the same time, it might be a little inconvenient.
Well, I don't, I think.
Chances of that happening.
Why don't we let, why don't we let the administration figure that out?
Let's see how it works.
Yeah, let them figure that out.
It's doubtful all seven of you are gonna have the same timeframe available anyways.
I mean, after what we just went through, probably, right? Okay, all right, so Alita, you'll coordinate with Dr. Bates and the principals and you'll send us something, thank you. Okay, great. All right. All right, we're on to old business. And we have a guest speaker tonight. Donna Lindstrom is the district, I, I call you the district nurse, but.
Health and Wellness Coordinator is my official title.
All right, she's the Health and Wellness Coordinator for the district. And you're gonna share with us, there's a document that was put in the packet, I'm sure everybody took a look at it. And Donna has created an emergency response task force. I'm gonna ask her to talk about this a little bit, what, what she's been working on this year, what they've accomplished, what they have yet to accomplish. And this is the committee that, last meeting, we asked for representatives from the communities because Donna has graciously offered to include residents. I, we've got interest from Lancaster, Mr. Mayo, and also interest from parents, the, the Moalies from Bolton. I don't know that you've heard from anyone in Stowe. So Stowe reps, if you could talk to parents who might be interested. I think you said you meet once a month?
Once a month, and we've set the schedule for the rest of the year. It's the first Monday of each month at three thirty at the high school.
So this is one of our initiatives, not, not this, but this, you know, pulling community members into committees and task forces as much as we can to get the involvement. Anyone who is interested to please send a, a letter or a quick email of interest to donnallindstrom@dlindstrom@nrsd.net. I feel like I'm doing an ad. And then Donna will get back to you. So anyway, Donna, take it away.
Thank you for inviting me to come tonight. The NRSD Emergency Response Task Force was formed last winter out of the School Health Advisory Council, which is, was a previously established entity that has been meeting for years. And we were looking at making sure that we were in compliance with several laws that are mandates in Massachusetts that relate to school safety. And one of them, the initial goal of this group was to look at our existing crisis plans and emergency response plans to be certain that we are in compliance with something called Michael's Law, which was signed into law in 2012 by the Massachusetts Legislature. And it was essentially the, the goal of, or the, the requirements of this particular regulation encompass a variety of school safety and emergency response plans. We have to submit our plans for each building to the Department of Education every three years. So 2012 was the first time that that was a requirement. And those plans were put into place and sent into the state. And so this past August in 2015, the next set were required. And so we needed to look at them all, reassess them, be certain that we had what we needed there and, and then resubmit them. So our thinking was that we really should bring in the experts and those people who are experts in those areas, in particular areas. And it covers emergency response times to campuses, we have to note those. The AEDs, the number of AEDs we have in buildings, we have to give information on the number of staff that we have who are trained in CPR and in AED. We have to provide information on communication. We have phone numbers of all of the, the people in the district who would need to be involved in emergency response. And then we have to outline three types of emergencies and our crisis plans and response plans to those. And, and the first is fire and evacuation plans. The second is emergency medical calls, which we call Code Blue here in the district. So code nine-one-one calls that we need to make and what the process and procedure is for, for people who are involved in that. And the third is lockdown shelter-in-place, shelter-in-building plans. So those all had to be outlined and again, sent off to the state. So thinking that, again, we wanted to bring the experts in and that it would make sense to really be sure that we had plans that were consistent across the district. Because in talking to different people, even in, even in one town, for example, in Stowe, there were certain very small pieces of the existing plans that were being done slightly differently at Hale than they were at Center. And so we thought it was really important to get the fire officials and, and police and EMS, as well as representatives from the school district together so that we could review them all. So we put out a call to our local public safety officials and they were amazing. They immediately said, absolutely, we'd be happy to participate, we think it's a great idea. We had a huge meeting, our first meeting, where we had a joint meeting actually between the School Health Advisory Council and the Emergency Response Task Force. And decided at that point that we really needed to break off and really focus and use the emergency response team as a task force on its, on its own. Because it's certainly a large, there's a lot to do in these areas. So the initial goal was to create those plans and to be, or to, to assess and evaluate the existing plans and update them as needed so that they'd be ready to go off to the state and to also make sure that we're training our staff. So the goal was by August to be certain that, that was all done. And we were able to accomplish that and did the training with the staff the days just prior to school opening. And so we had everybody up at the high school and, and trained everybody all at once, so everyone received the same message. We had the, our former police chief from Bolton, Chief Alfano came and presented the lockdown portion. We had Captain John Paul Albinoyt from Stowe who did the fire evacuation as well. So we had guest speakers who came in to, to talk to the staff. So that was wonderful. We modeled roughly our, our plan around the school safety and security report that came out of Governor, former Governor Patrick's Task Force on School Safety. And this, this document has been invaluable and it sets up a framework that's, or it's modeled basically around a framework called the Emergency Management Cycle, as I note here. Prevent, prepare, respond, and recover. So those are the four segments of that emergency cycle. So we focused primarily because of timing and wanting to be sure that we had those emergency response plans in place on the respond portion, with a little bit of the prepare that needed to, to be in there. And then, once we completed that, we felt that there were really a lot of parts that we needed to continue to go back and look to complete that cycle. Prevent and prevention and post prevention essentially. So what do we do following a crisis? Do we have all of our, all of our responses and support in place? So that if there is a crisis, that we can respond and make sure that we can help our community recover. And then obviously prevention is big. And certainly with all of the events that are going on in the country, with emergencies at schools and other, other public buildings, to really take a look at our current levels of school's security and safety and be sure that we are up to, up to speed. And if not, then to make recommendations and make changes as needed. So that, from this point forward, that is what we're working on. So we're really trying to take a look at our current levels of security and safety in each building. Our membership, we had dwindled a little, a little bit from last year as we know that people have, make other commitments and can't be in. But our public safety officials continue to come every meeting or send representatives, alternates to them. Lorraine has asked Kathy and Neil to also be members of our team this year, which will be wonderful, so that we can have your advice and expertise as well as we go through this. As Lorraine mentioned, we're trying to increase the parent, the, the parent membership. We have a representative from the Shoba, the student body, Anthony Tada from Stowe, who is fantastic and has incredible insight and is very willing to speak and help us out. Has come up with some really wonderful ideas so far as well. And we have facilities, the facilities manager, Bill Clary, or Richard Naglion attends as well, because a lot of this has to do with facilities. So do we have, we're, we're talking about door locks and we're talking about communication. We're making sure that we have P A systems that, that work in every area and that phones are, are in place as well. So we're really going to get down to very fine and minute details. We certainly have all these things into place. And then again, recovery. So we're looking also to have some of our mental health professionals in the district as well help us participate because of, obviously a lot of this is very emotional and psychological as well. So that is what our plan is going forward from here on out.
Great, do you have questions?
So we've been talking, I don't know if you're aware, but in the school committee, we've been talking about the radio and like the camera for securities and stuff. This is stuff that you guys are gonna be on top of. And so moving forward, this committee would be responsible, this task force would be responsible for identifying those, like for instance, the radio and the repeater that we're talking about. If, if somebody's in there, they can't, if, if our.
But that's.
Well, I'm just trying to define what that is, because I'm looking at the School Safety and Security Task Force, which that did fall under. The radio, for instance, was a grant at that point in time that, that was being offered for, for radios and things like that. So I want to know what specifically is being covered by this task force? Or if there's, just to make sure nothing falls through the loop.
Oh, I don't, I don't think it will, I mean.
Well.
Yes, no.
Who's covering it?
So, so I just had, recently had a conversation with the town administrator in Bolton, who I've asked him to provide me, which I will share with you, their priorities for the budget cycle. As far as, I think the things we, we, or they asked for are the laptop that the SRO currently has. The administration jumped on that, got them the laptop. We also are looking at increasing the part-time SRO at the high school to full-time SRO. And this is all in the context of just at the high school, right? This is what, what I have for you. And then they are finalizing and sending me costs for additional cameras. But we aren't at that point yet. I would ask the finance subcommittee to talk with George and figure out how many cameras are currently in the budget for the high school. And then, once they give us that final tally, what their recommendation is. Because this may be a month-to-year kind of thing, you know? We may have to look at, well, these are the six priorities. We're gonna take the first three this year, the next three next year, I don't know, I'm giving you an idea of that. And then the radios and the repeater are being costed out as well. I think that in this particular instance with the high school, because it's something that we had already started, certainly Donna would be involved and aware of it. But I think that generally, if it's in the other schools, unless there's some big issue that comes to us, I think it would bubble up through Donna's group. So I don't know if I'm answering your question.
Hmm, kind of, I mean, we've already begun the conversation on the, the cameras, the repeater and so forth. But moving forward, is it, is, is, I'm just wondering who's tasked with identifying, like these things were identified semi-organically, they kind of bubbled up through us, okay? And that's not really the way it should happen, I feel. And what I'm saying is, is the task force being tasked with the duty of trying to identify those things proactively and then coming forward with a list of these are the things that we've identified as issues, grade them, whatever you want to do, but bring them forward and then the administration carries it.
So we don't own this task force, the administration owns this task force, right? So if the administration, I'm sorry, you're being talked about like an item and I don't mean to do that. But if the administration owns the task force, then I think we would talk with the administration to try to understand what it is that you want to get at.
Am I not being clear? So what I'm, what I'm saying is.
I don't know, are you?
What I'm saying is, there are security issues, which I, I think, this is what Donna's saying, is that they are coming together with a group of professionals and volunteers looking to identify security issues. In the past, for instance, Florence Sawyer, it was after an unfortunate incident, well, that's a really understatement, but it was after a really bad thing that happened in schools. Suddenly, there were some parents that were interested in securing the doors, for instance. And that's how that bubbled up. So what I'm saying is, is the task force, it sounds like you're trying to be proactive, which is awesome. And what I'm saying is, is, are you covering the high schools, the schools and everything? And coming forward with the issues that we're dealing with now, but they're not gonna bubble up, they're hopefully gonna come from the task force? That's my question.
I think that's the point of it, isn't it?
Yes, that's, I think that's our goal, I would say that that's absolutely our goal. So the, so the, so for example, I'll give you some of the things that we've already been talking about just a little bit. And a lot of these came through police and fire. And these are things that they've heard about and feel that then, they might be something that we should consider. There is a device called, well, the Raptor system, which is an identify, identification system that would be set up at the entrance of the buildings and anyone entering would have to run their license through. It creates a list, it checks the sex offender registry, it creates a badge that has a photograph that the person has to wear. And so there's an immediate identification of who's there. Really seems like a wonderful system. So we're going to have a demonstration in our task force and then come forth with a recommendation as to that, whether that's something that we should really think about. The second device that we've been talking about quite a bit is something called a NightLock system. And you can look it up, it's, I think, nightlock.com. But it's actually a, it's a very small metal device that can be used to barricade a door, a classroom door, for example, from the inside. There's a plate that's applied to the bottom of the door and a plate that's applied to the floor. And this metal piece is stored near the door and if there's a lockdown called, the occupants of the room remove, take that from, from its box and drop it into a slot. And they've shown, they've, they've tried using sledgehammers and crowbars and they just, you cannot get through the door. And so as a lockdown barrier that will prevent someone from breaching or entering a room or an area, looks like something, it's very simple, easy to install. We'd have to buy thousands of them. We're, we're counting doors currently to, to, so that we can have an estimate as to what that would, that would cost. I think they're fifty dollars a piece and then we have to figure out installation and so forth. So those are the kind of things that are being brought by our experts in our task force. And so these are some of the things that if we all feel together that that's something we should really look at, we'll bring it forth as a recommendation.
That's awesome, that, that's what I was doing.
Well, good, thank you, Donna. Lynn?
Hi, I just have a couple of questions. Basically, like a lot of things you're talking about, you changed a little culture of the way we operate. And I don't know if it's good, I don't know if it's bad.
How?
But, well, we're going into lockdown, I mean, this, this lockdown.
Well, we do lockdown now.
That's required.
Mm-hmm. I know, but it, it's, it's changing. And so there's a lot of, I mean, you're adding the police, you're adding, you know, you're getting them all involved, which is awesome. But is anyone looking at, it is at a whole, like on a, on a, on a, I don't know, psychological level? I'm not really sure what level it is, but it's, it's a, it's an all-over look. I mean, I, remember when I talked to, there's a group out in Worcester, you know, and they're the attachment disorder issue. They do more than that. And so what they do is they come in and they look at the culture of the school and the people that are involved and the fire, police, selectmen, they say everyone should be involved because everybody's involved. And we're, we're changing, you know? And so it just helps people deal with all of the changes and what's going on and how we deal with whatever it is we're doing. So, I mean, are you looking into any part of that or are we just looking at gadgets to lock doors and go into lockdown?
No, that's part of the prevent, the prevention portion of this cycle. They do talk about that, that it really, that it is cultural and that we need to make sure that the community is all on board and is understanding. So there's education pieces that are part of that, there are responses and, and information that we can provide. There are responses and information that we can provide. And that's why we're bringing, that's why, as Lorraine suggested, we make certain that we have stakeholders from all levels and areas that are part of the group, so that we can look at that and be certain that we're addressing all of those.
So, are you working with somebody now or just individual groups?
She's got representatives from each of those constituent groups that she mentioned, that you're referencing, in, on this task force. They all come together.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Well, I just wondered if there's somebody that, is there to help? Because you've got somebody from police, somebody from fire, somebody from, but is there anyone there?
Didn't you say you had psychologists that were involved?
Well, we're, it's, it's one of, we're, we're trying to encourage some, we have guidance counselors from the district who are on the, on the task force. We have nurses that are on the task force. So, I think those people certainly are looking at, it's, it's, it's sort of the mental health and emotional issue that you're worried, that you're worrying about, yes, absolutely. So, it is part, it's part of, of that entire emergency management cycle, is to make sure that we're being sensitive to the fact that there are crises and they can be very frightening for everyone involved. And so, to prepare people and to be certain that we're made, that, that we are, that we're not frightening people, that we're preparing people and that, we actually talked about that Monday night at our, at our last meeting. That there, there was a school district somewhere in the United States, I saw it on the internet, that decided that they would do a surprise lockdown at their school and they sent in law enforcement with weapons. And so, there was great controversy about that.
I'm not gonna do that, are you?
No. Not at all. And they, and so, that's, that was a great debate afterward, obviously was. Yes, it's important to prepare people to be sure that they know what to do in case that there's an emergency, but do we, we need to do it in a very, very sensitive way? Because if you frighten some, someone, they're not gonna learn.
You're saying, is there a professional that comes in that is, is well-versed in that, to train the guidance and the teachers in how to help kids? Like, I recall that you talk about these things and there are some kids that wouldn't come to school because they were afraid, even though you're just rehearsing. So, is there a, a mental health professional that would be a resource, like fire, like police, that would come in and do that type of work with the community?
Certainly look at someone out to, either inviting or retaining someone to come and, and speak with us. That's a good idea. And perhaps over, look at our plans overall and see. I know the state has a service or a group that will come out and look at your emergency response plans, but I'm not cer, I'm, I'm thinking that they're really looking at security and basics as opposed to that. But I can certainly contact them as well and see, perhaps they have a recommendation for us.
And as far as the cameras, I mean, finding out where you're deficient and everything, that's gonna be a, a network issue, because they, as far as I know, they're all going through the network. And so, is there any plans to coordinate with the I T?
We've already had somebody come through there to take a look at things.
But have you coordinated with these guys?
We, we, we have our facilities team or representatives on the task force and they are the ones that are bringing forth those, those, or we're asking them to make sure that all of those, that infrastructure is in place.
Okay, so, and the other thing I worry about is the, the Raptor system that you're talking about and all those other systems and the radios, the repeaters? From what I understand, the police and fire have grants for those. Is anyone looking at that or do they just wanna put it back on the district?
Don, Don is, I'm gonna jump in, I'm sorry. And then, Don Lowe is looking into, he just told me this today, he's looking into a grant for the repeater system.
But that would just, would that just be the high school or, because I think we would have to do that individually, the town, right?
That is at the high school because of the constraint that the high school has. I don't know about the other schools.
Is that an issue with radios of the other schools?
But the radio is for the police and I don't know that we have police presence in the other schools.
No, and Florence Sawyer has direct access anyways. If they, if they were inside the building, they're not affected. I don't know the other towns, though, if Lancaster or Stowe have those problems.
That would fall under you guys?
Right, exactly, exactly. And that's, again, some of the, another, another request, actually, from our Stowe police rep was, can we potentially, can they have access to the cameras that are in the school? So that if they receive a call, for example, that's, there's something going on, that they can, on their screen in there, call up the cameras and actually see what's going on as they're arriving. So, it's another, it's something we're exploring at this point.
You coordinate with the town, because you might have an I N A. I know district-wise, we own fiber, but we need it from Verizon, I guess. So, I don't know if you can hop on to that, but I think the town itself would have an I N A.
Questions over here, the quiet side of the room.
And there, there was a, there was a grant available and that program was, was out a couple of years ago. But we didn't take advantage of it at that point in time.
Apparently not.
It's not, it was like a one, yeah, it was like a one-time shot, so I think Don's...
It might be granted.
Well, that's what Don's gonna look into, so, and I'm sure he'll work through Chief Nelson. And Kurt, you're gonna be meeting with the police and fire this week.
This week, yes.
So, we can reiterate that at that point, too.
Another suggestion that was made, actually, by a parent representative from Lancaster on Monday was, are, do we have a corporate partnership that we can try to tap into? He, he works in security in his company, he's the head of security facilities. And he said his company, for example, will match funds or will provide funds as long as there's a specific item that someone comes forth and requests. So, he's looking into those, actually, to see if there are such partnerships in the area or whether it's something that we could create.
That's great.
And perhaps task, say, we want to purchase X number of NightLock systems. Is there, is there someone out there that can help sponsor that?
Coca-Cola.
Excuse me, one second. Kurt?
Donna, I can direct you to a resource person who we had, I brought in. I don't know if you've heard of her, is Maria Trazi, from the Good Grief Program out of Boston Medical. And she is phenomenal and she does P D for staff and trains them what sort of things that you should, you should be saying to children. And it was very, it was very powerful, but it isn't, and it's, and it's for every, any gamut of, it could be a death, it could be whatever, whatever sort of crisis can happen within a school. And the staff absolutely went away from there, they were just so thankful that they, she provided them with the tools, 'cause it's things you don't even think of.
I think we've used, George, we've used Good Grief.
We definitely used them.
When we had, um, crisis or deaths, yes, exactly. I think we've called them in, but I, I'm not familiar with Maria, so that would be...
She's, she was the original one who got called up to call by. And so, she's, and she's gone all over the country and she is just phenomenal.
Okay, do we have, and, and, maybe it's Kurt, but somebody that helps coordinate between all these task force things? Because everything's touching.
Isn't that a good thing?
It's awesome, but is there anybody coordinating?
So...
Well, there is a law. There is a law that your police and fire chiefs are supposed to be meeting with the superintendent every year to review all crisis plans. That's supposed to be done in August before schools open.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking that large. I was thinking our task force, within our district.
That's what he's saying.
Yeah, but he's talking about, there's a law that he's gonna meet with police, fire, ambulance, whatever, that you'll be meeting with those personally. But our little task force, you know, Donna's and, you know, I T, whatever we have.
Facilities.
All of, yeah, facility, they're all touching. You know, space needs, there's a lot of cross-coordination.
So, there is, so I think, you know, I'm not gonna give you a final answer, but I think what's happening and what we're seeing happening over the past seven months is, Donna's working on something that starts to impact the work that, that Neil and you are doing on the technology committee, which starts to impact work that's, and people are talking. And I think that's part of why we have so many more subcommittee report outs now than we ever did, because we're really starting to open up the coffers and look at, you know, where are these things cross-pollinating, so that we can all come together and have the substantive conversations. And that is why Donna has invited us into her task force and that's why we're inviting more parents. And yes, is there a formal visio-document for it? No, there is not a formal visio-document. It kinda all is coming together at this point here, when we're talking about the subcommittees. But I think to ask people to sit in more meetings in the district would be tough. And I think at this point, that, this is where we are now. However, that's not a bad idea, as we start to look at what our goals are for the upcoming year, to think about that. So, that's a good one, I'll put that online. Any other questions for Donna? What?
Nothing.
Nope? Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, do you have any questions for us?
We don't, we just appreciate the input and the help. And I think that, that I think reporting back out to all of you will be very helpful as well. For example, you're coming up with some thoughts that haven't come up yet in our, in our task force. So, I think that...
You can finish your notes.
I, I, I think the collaboration will be very, very effective.
The DeWol Patrick form, is that online?
I, I couldn't find it online, honestly. I wanted to contact them and order more of these, so that I can bring them to you and to give them out to people. I'll work on it a little bit more. It was actually, it was actually put out in July of two thousand and fourteen, so it's getting to the point where it's kind of, it's old, so it may be...
I think it's on the Secretary of Education webpage. I think it's on the Secretary of Education's webpage, I believe. It used to be there, I love it still.
We'll take a look and then I can, I can send that out and repost it.
Oh, very great. So, so Neil and Kathy, or Kathy and Neil. So, the reason that the school committee representation is on Donna's task force is because it involves safety and security. If there's anything that Donna's task for, I wouldn't call it the task force, 'cause it sounds... The task force comes up with this, you need urgently, that's why you guys are there, so you can feed it immediately to us and we can react to it. So, thank you for inviting us in. All right, can I, thank you. Okay, subcommittee reports, again, we've, we've got a few more than we normally do and, and we're gonna continue to have them, because I think as we start to get school committee representation on some of these big initiatives, just to keep us all informed. Mark, you, you're on for finance.
I'll pass around the warrants for those who have signed them, just in case you're among the few. The, all the finance committee has signed, signed the warrants for this last week. I'll, I'll mention that I sent to my town finance committee and administrators links to the various documents that we've talked about in the last several meetings and have been reported out from the finance committee. And I passed along my message to the other members of finance committee, so they could also do similar kind of thing, just to let people know there's preliminary things that have been, they're public documents and they've got something to think about and to work with. So, I'm just, I think, I think that's probably something that they'll, they'll take up on their own initiative. We're in a quiet period while the administration does the detail work on the budget. And that's, we don't have additional activity to report out, besides, we're waiting for some, a lot of work to come forth.
Okay.
A real voice by concern again, though, that we've got a big nut that needs to be overcome as far as, as we know, as far as potential increases. Like, something, and I keep going back and I know I'm just a broken record with this, but I really feel that if we have a budget book, which I know George had talked about, you know, getting more of a narrative together, it makes it easier to identify things broken down and, and know where we were, where we are, where we wanna be and then kinda come in and say, okay, well, this is, this is an area that, for the administration, this is an area that can be looked at. And as far as school committee goes, because we don't cross that line into the administration, we can take a look at, you know, this particular area, you know, have you considered, you know, this or that? The administration can, you know, take a look at things. And I, and I really think that it's, it's worth doing. And I've mentioned before that, you know, there are opportunities for Masbo to come in and just do a quick, not quick, but they come in, they sort of get things, the process jump-started. And I don't believe it's, it's expensive and I think in the long run, I think it will save a ton of money, both in time, terms of time and aggravation. So, I will keep pounding that drum and beating the man drum.
I don't think you need to, I don't know that you need to pound the drum and I appreciate you bringing it up and you've brought it up several times, and Kathy and Mark, and you were at the conference back in November and, and it's come up a couple of times, it came up in conversation with George and Kurt and myself as well.
We were at Trittown.
And, and at Trittown. And I think that we, we probably should, if you could, could you, would you? Do you know what the cost is on, on that? And they call it an audit, but is it really an audit?
No, it's a financial review.
Okay, so it's a financial review. And the value?
Fifty-nine hundred.
All right, so it's fifty-nine hundred dollars. And do you know, the questions I would have on it are, what do we come out of it with? And how long does it typically take?
My understanding is that they would come in, provide you with materials for a self-assessment through the financial department and everybody involved, the finances. And once they get the self-assessment, then they send a team of two people out, spend two days. And then, they usually have the report to you within five weeks. And they, they can do it on an expedited process.
Oh, so they could, because...
Dr. Pace, I know this is in your wheelhouse, so here's a question. We're going through a transitional period. Is it worth, in your opinion, doing something now, going into the budget? Or is it something that should be done later? I mean, is this, you know what I mean? I mean, your guidance is obviously really key on that.
With, with anybody going in, in a transitional, my recommendation, and I, I said this before, 'cause I teach the financial course, any administrator, I recommend that some sort of review be done before anybody comes into a position. So, whether it's me for the six months or whoever, or for your permanent present, something should be done prior. So, however you choose to do it is up to you.
It doesn't take a long time.
No, it's a, yeah, you roughly, again, once you contact them, you get the information, you get the self-assessment, get the self-assessment in. So, you're probably talking, they said, you know, report within five weeks and they could expedite it on a...
So, how, so how would we, how would we proceed on this? Would you handle that for us, getting in touch with these people?
You would have to vote the...
So, we would have to vote to...
The expense.
To appro, right.
And then contact John Craft at Masbo and he would...
So, we would contact him?
No.
You would contact, okay. George, hi, we're talking about this and, and we haven't pulled you into the conversation.
Listening intently.
So, if the school committee decides to do this, it's a five thousand nine hundred dollar expense. Where, if, where are we in?
I mean, on a bottom-line basis, I'm sure we can locate the money. I mean, there have been a couple of other things that weren't planned in our contract services line item that that money's been allocated to. So, I mean, it's not there, so eventually we need a school committee transfers from some other area of the money.
Okay, how do people feel about this?
Does it affect this coming budget?
Yes.
It does affect.
Well, they would give us a preview into it.
I know we need a clean house before we bring somebody new in, but, not clean house, but evaluation. But would it affect the budget?
Well, by the time it gets done, I think right now, we're gonna be pretty much through the budget process.
Can I make maybe one suggestion? Just, I'm familiar with the program a little bit. And I know you guys saw a, was that the seminar down there, that Wednesday afternoon, is that where it was?
Well, pardon me, it was a panel being run by a bunch of CFOs and business managers.
These are public documents, once they're completed, obviously. Maybe could we ask for another districts to see the results, everybody knows what they're buying and maybe get it by next week even? And then you guys could see what it is, they think, when and how you think it would be helpful. So, I would see the report that somebody else has and you can decide next week whether you want it now or in three months or whatever.
What is it?
It's a, that's a great idea.
How do you guys feel about that?
Yeah, I don't think it can hurt.
I don't think it would hurt to see the product, yeah.
We ought to have a meeting for next week.
Yep.
So, we're gonna have to add this to, we could wait till next... So we're gonna have to add this to, we could wait till next week.
Yeah, absolutely.
And you said you could just pull it off?
Well, we can just ask them for it, it's a public document, I'm sure they'll give us one. Then you can see the product and you can then decide.
If that's what you really need.
If that's what you need and when you want it more broadly.
Two different ones?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a district you have in mind?
We don't know what districts they did, so, but you can see what the product is, so you know what you're buying and you know when you might want to buy it.
Would you be able to ask that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So Kurt's gonna take care of getting a couple of those for us next. Are you with us? But you're not with us next week.
Yes, he doesn't start teaching twice.
Oh, okay, good. Thank you.
I'm gonna add that to the spreadsheet.
All right, so that's good. So Dr. Bates will get a couple of samples for us.
Adding it to the spreadsheet.
To share with, thank you, to share at our meeting next week and then we can make a decision as to what we want to do that. Okay. Thank you, thank you all. Personnel, Kathy?
Okay, our next meeting is next Monday, January 11th. On the 13th, however, we will be having a workshop with MASC, Dorothy Presser will be here to talk about the things that we need to do in preparation for our superintendent search. I'll be sending you a couple of documents. I think I already sent Looking for a Leader, but I will resend it. And then there is another document that she just sent called Decision Tree, Vacancy in the Superintendency, Key Decisions for Planning for Transition. So when I send those, I want to have another conversation with her, just to sort of outline the workshop. And she anticipates it'll take about ninety minutes during the course of the meeting.
Okay.
So if you could please let me know when it's, the timeframe for her, I can communicate with her.
So we have a couple of items that we're gonna wanna handle next week that we probably should do first. And it's probably not more than thirty minutes, if we go through the few policies, the Masbo discussion.
We have one small donation we need to accept, but that's a...
That's a two-second thing. So...
That's all I have.
And I think that's it.
Four policies, the donation and the Masbo is all I have on the list.
So we could probably have her start at six-thirty?
Either, I think.
Yeah, six-thirty. I'd have her, feel like she can come earlier if she wants, because we're pretty, pretty good with time. Does that work? I'm sorry, I'm telling Alita and I should be telling you, Kathy.
I heard you tell her that.
I'm so sorry.
Six-thirty sounds, I'll give her a call tomorrow and put a framework together and I'll send out the documents.
Okay, thanks, thank you so much. Policy.
Alita just kind of did our update for us.
Awesome.
We have four policies that we're going to bring forward at the next meeting that we voted through today. We spent our most time talking about the J-LGA, the Life-Threatening Allergy Policy. The parents came in and we discussed the growing pains that are happening with the brand-new policy. Changed and added, we didn't change, we added a sentence into the policy that is going to be coming to you guys next week that seemed to answer several different concerns. And, and that was pretty much our meeting.
So you're gonna bring forward four policies?
Four policies.
Great. Perfect. Space study. Is anybody at the last space study?
I don't think there's anything new to report. I think that, that Bob was here at the last meeting and did his presentation. And I think the next meeting is...
Tomorrow, tomorrow night?
That's right, tomorrow night, it's right here on my calendar. Yep.
I know that he, he met with Neil, myself, and, and our town administrator to talk about the next step with an SOI. And I have a few questions that I asked him.
Is he coming back? Not on the 13th?
No, he, I, I told him in order to get him in to talk to us about that, it would have to be at the end of January, the beginning of February.
Okay.
Just based on, you know, what we've got pressing us right now. So, I think you guys will have more when you come out of your meeting tomorrow night.
Yep.
And then he'll probably let us know. And you can let me know as well.
Sure.
What you think. Okay. Thank you, Kathy. CPAC?
CPAC has a couple of events coming up. On the 13th, they have a parent workshop at seven o'clock at the high school titled, What Can the DDS, which is the Department of Developmental Services, do for you? So again, it's a workshop for parents to talk about how they can use the DDS as advocates for them in the schools. And their next open house is going to be January 29th at Sawyer. And from what I understand, I think all of their parent liaisons at each of the schools, I think that those positions have been filled.
Oh, great.
Yeah, so.
Good. At what time is that meeting on the, do you know?
On the 29th?
Yeah.
I don't.
I'll look in, I'll look on the website. Okay, thank you.
The, the one that they did at Center was right after school started, like nine AM, so I wouldn't doubt if it was the same.
Okay, I'll look into it. Thanks, I might pop in.
Did they get a good turnout?
Oh, well, the one at Center was their first one, so they're, I don't, they might actually be experimenting with times, I don't know.
Tech Committee, Neil?
Yes, so I've included a couple sheets in the package which we went over at this last tech committee meeting. And it, it deals with supports needed for the digital learning at NRSB. You know, we have obviously a district improvement plan that involves technology as one of the main elements of the district improvement plan. And they came back with a list of what they felt would be, and it's, and it's done based on what they consider hierarchical importance. Six years ago, there were two instructional technology teaching positions that were eliminated.
Six years ago?
Six years ago, when we basically didn't have a whole lot of technology in the classrooms. They've been working with, you know, those two less people through this initiative as they're rolling out the one-on-one and so forth. And the district improvement plan is a lot more aggressive. And I'm not sure if there's actually a plan in place for step increases for personnel to add to that support, but they felt that at this point in time, middle school teachers and students only have enough support for two days out of a six-day rotation. Teaching MS students new drafts in digital literacy and computer science standards would be able to be added to. A better provision transition, this is their rationale for this, a better provision transition to a grade six through twelve, one-to-one initiative, which is where we're heading. And a decrease in web help desk support tickets and an increase in on-the-spot support in classrooms. So to let teachers and students be more productive throughout the day, rather than waiting for the turnaround tickets, somebody who's not there in the building to come from, who knows whether it's here or wherever, from the district to do these modifications. And a lot of times what will happen is it works into PD time also, because a lot of times teachers will have specific issues or problems with particular software or, you know, teaching tools. And they'll be able to go to that person on site and say, how would I, during their downtime, how would I work this out? And they're able to, on the spot, provide some PD time, which seems to be really important to the teachers because this upcoming Professional Development Day, fully one-third of the staff chose technology as a thing that they want to have more personal development on. So I think it's a, it's a strong argument and I get the point that I'm just saying two bodies for, you know, there's a lot more going on in the district, but I think this plays a key role in the district improvement plan, being able to, to put that forth effectively and meet the needs that we've, we've established for ourselves.
Anybody else? Yeah?
I, I'd like us to revisit the faculty survey from last year, because technology was something that stood out and that there was a disparity among the schools in terms of satisfaction with IT support and then instructional support. And I think, I recall earlier in the year bringing it up in terms of next steps would be great if, if that could be unpacked a little further at each school. Because I think you start to put the pieces together, like Lynn was saying, everything touches. But this just seems to be, in my mind anyway, related to some of the issues that came out of that report. So I know that we cannot say, you know, you can see a need and say it's important, but there are other moving pieces.
That's right.
But it's, it's, it should go into the mix in terms of what we consider when we're budgeting. But this is the, and I've been going to the committee meetings with Neil and Lynn's part of that committee as well. But these are the things that, that come up. And again, and it's been mentioned a number of times on this committee, that the district improvement plan is heavy in expectations for teachers and digital learning and use of technology. And what type of support are we providing? So you can have the IT support to make sure the stuff is working, but you also need that curriculum support. And, you know, I was at Hale and we had a dedicated teacher there and it was, it was amazing. And in Concord, each school has an IT slash curriculum person dedicated to the building. And it makes a huge, huge difference. So I'm not saying that we fill everything out the window and just put all our money toward that. But I think those are the conversations we need to start looking.
Absolutely.
And you look at it programmatically, if we're trying to integrate technology, then, you know, where are the support people to do that? So for me, I know it's in the district improvement plan, but I'm looking at it programmatically as well.
So, so I'm glad you brought that up and thank you, because I think we've all been talking about looking at things from a programmatic perspective. I mean, it's become almost the mantra of the school committee, each one of us. And I guess I would say to you folks, as we get ready to, to look into the budget and roll out your recommendations to us, is there a way for us to look at the sections of the budget that are programs? Not just the bucket items that, that our subcommittee has worked with George on, but what, what is the, the digital learning component? What does that encompass and what is the need? And I, and I know that that's an awful lot to ask for, especially from you, but, and even from, from George's perspective. But I think if you could feed it to us and the community from a programmatic perspective, we would be able to make better informed decisions that may have more impact, Kathy.
The next thing I'm gonna say is not a judgment, it's an observation.
Of?
I'm gonna get to that.
Okay.
Wait for it. No, on the technology committee.
Yes.
It's a great group of people and they're really devoting a lot of their time to it. But it doesn't represent every school in the district and every level at the district. And so we're hearing a lot from, I think it's, I think most of the teachers on it are from Bolton.
No.
No?
No, from a high school.
Who's on that, from the high school?
You've got mostly, mostly from the high school. You've got Bolton, you've got Bolton High School and I don't think SO is, is well represented.
And sometimes Laura French is there from Lancaster. My point is this, I want, I would like to hear more from the people in the trenches, the boots on the ground. What do you need? And if there's a way to get more teach, and that's why I go back to the survey, which teachers gave input to, and I don't know that anything else has been done with that in terms of drilling down a little bit on some of the data.
Yeah, the other thing is, that's actually a requirement coming up with this whole digital learning thing, is that teachers have to use the SAMR model. They have to start creating blended lessons. And we had that presentation on November 18th with what's being done. Each one of those lessons, those modules that they put together, incredibly time-consuming. And, and I'm not sure how much everyone appreciates the amount of time that has to go into these blending, blended learning modules to get them together. And that's another thing that the technology teachers are able to actually assist and do is create some of these modules and help the teachers do that more expeditiously. So I, again, to your point, look at the program, where we're heading and what we're doing, and making sure that maybe we're, we're given the right support in the right places.
Right, well, it's not just, it's just not allocating the money for this. It's what's the value and the benefit?
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, I, does, does that make?
I would go, again, being new, I don't know. Do you have standards for each grade level in technology?
I don't know that we could answer that.
Not technology.
Because that's something that, I mean, the state has standards, technology standards. So has each grade level chosen, so it's, so it's scaffolded, so as they grow to the grades, they have those skills.
That's a good question.
I don't know how, get the answer to that.
You know, thinking that you should need to... I don't think you can be spending all this money on that.
Right, right.
If, if it's not gonna meet the needs of each grade level.
That's right.
The other tool the district has that we don't have a lot of, or any visibility to is the Atlas Curriculum Mapping Software. And that's the ideal place to, to see what's going on and to show that what you're doing in the classroom is paired with standards. And, because I agree, because the other question that I raised in this was, what do people understand as the expectation? The district improvement plan talks about that all teachers will use a SAMR model, but where are all teachers in their progress for that? And how do you evaluate your own lesson? What tool do you use? And so they have to develop some kind of a way to assess or self-assess or peer-assess the work that they're doing. So they seem, there are a lot of good ideas, but to me, there are a lot of loose ends that need to be tied up. And, and I know it takes time and I, I think we need to understand, how, understand what time folks need, but also what the ultimate expectations are and how we support them. Because it just seems like these are great ideas, but there are, there are things about, you know, assessment and standards that are gaps in this plan.
And also have your teachers taken their own self-assessment in technology where they are?
Where they don't have a tool for doing it. They can, I mean, to me, I would think you need a consistent subset of it.
So as a person, as a person who writes tools for a living, I would say tools are a reflection of your process and that's all they are. So you can write it on a piece of paper, I'm, you know what I mean? Like, like you can say, I am not fluent in these things and I'm fluent in these things, I don't think we need, you know what I mean? I'm just saying.
No, but I'm saying, I think there are, the, what are the standards that we want teachers to have in terms of understanding where they should be? But there has to be something that is documented, so that they can say...
But not a tool, it's a doc-
Well, I call it a tool.
Tim, may I show yourself?
Yeah, yeah.
A couple minutes. Our technology plan, which is in the process of being revised as we know, does give a overview of the standards per grade levels and cluster grade levels. I agree with you on Atlas, it's a, you know, it's a great tool and it's, our teachers are working with it. And our goal has been, and I haven't been directly involved in this, but I mean, just from talking to a lot of the people who govern, is to have it viewable by the end of the school year. Because that's the, some of the PD focus has been this year, in fact, it will be next week at our PD day, developing those unit-based lessons in, in specifically in Atlas. A lot of teachers have done some with it, I don't, a lot, some teachers have done a lot with it. So I, I think all those things are right. I think that, you know, the need that Neil articulates, you know, I agree with you, it would be beautiful to have that teacher, you know, in the middle schools all day long. But what I was saying to the finance committee earlier, I think maybe we need to take a little bit of a broader view of it. Because I don't think we just want to drop two teachers in there, because that's the way we did it six years ago. Because as you may have been on now, actually, since you weren't here, three years ago, all the middle schools, we pulled the full-time librarians out of the middle schools. There's a budget cutting issue, the school committee took that as one of the options at the end of the budget process. And since those are both, you know, in the, you know, in the literacy media place, maybe there's some way we can, since, since in both the middle schools too, all three of those schools, the labs and the libraries are, you know, connected to each other. since in both the middle schools too, all three of those schools, the labs and the libraries are, you know, connected to each other. Maybe we want to get more of an overall placement of such a position to service those areas of research and technology well. And then allow us, I agree with Kirk says, we have to know where, what we're trying to do with these people. So I think the idea of adding these people, to the extent that we can add anybody, makes sense. But I think we have to have a strategic plan, so to speak.
I think that's why we need to understand what the program is.
Right, right.
It keeps coming back to, what are we doing? What's the value of what we're doing? What are we trying to get out of it? And then how does it touch all these other areas that are connected to it? It's not about, like you said, dropping two people in.
Right.
It's more about the impact and the intent, right? The intent and the impact.
Yeah, so I mean, I think it was, I mean, you know, honestly and frankly, we know this, but, you know, we don't have a program-based budget right now, okay? Our budget's not billed as a program-based budget, it's more of a traditional-based budget. That doesn't mean we can't analyze programs.
Right.
But we have to, like, you'd have to say, let's analyze a technology program and then, you know, the digital learning program. Then we can pull out the components of the budget and give a program analysis as it impacts the budget. That would probably be helpful.
Yeah, I think that's the way we really, I mean, honestly, George, in order for any of us to really understand absolutely, that's how we have to be able to, because we have to understand it and then be able to articulate it to the rest of the community.
That's right.
Because we owe it to the community as well as the staff to explain to them what it is that we're doing for them on their behalf.
Well, for instance, we're, this technology committee is putting together the digital learning plan and the technology plan. But none of that talks about how you're going to get there, okay? And I think that's where, you know, we just need to make sure that the administration, I mean, that's the program, right? But how are you gonna implement the program? How are you gonna grow it out? Where are the personnel gonna come from? What are the implications in the budget? And, you know, so we have these rubrics that are in place, but they involve or necessitate individuals to be able to move them to the next level. And that's what's missing in this. And I think that's, and you just helped me articulate that, I think, a little bit better, because that is what's missing in there. And so the technology committee, footloose and fancy free, came up with this as genuine concerns, you know, as to what they feel based on where this digital technology plan is going. They'll need to accomplish those goals. Now, maybe that's spot on because they're involved in there, there is going to be other elements and everything. And I'm not just focusing on this, but I am a very big proponent for the digital initiative, which we're required as a district to be embracing. And I think if we're gonna do it, we wanna do it well and as cost-effectively as possible, but that means doing it well.
I agree, I mean, I think, I mean, I think definitely this would be very welcome. It's just another priority and how to integrate it and how to maximize the efficiency of it.
Right.
I mean, I totally agree with you.
So that's administration, really, to come up with that plan and that process. And I guess, is that what you're saying?
Exactly.
And then maybe share that with the school committee, how this is the program, how are you gonna get?
The administration understands that intimate and intricate need, right? We do not.
Right.
And so we would expect that the administration would come to us and say, this is what we need and this is why we need it. And this is the value of it, and this is where we're going, and this is how it fits in with where we ultimately wanna be five and 10 years down the road. And then we enable, right? And if it feels not quite right, we ask the questions. And if it still feels not quite right, we may put it into a prioritization list, a multi-year prioritization list, which, oh, by the way, we're gonna talk about soon, but yeah.
But we know the full growth, the budget year for finance subcommittee, we know this year over year. Again, this is almost like a budget book type of a thing, where now you know you've got the plan, but you also know in theory.
Where you're going.
Where this is growing, not just it's gonna cost us thirty-some-odd thousand dollars for a bunch of Chromebooks.
Right.
There's a lot more that's.
What's the value of it and not just the dollar value?
Right, exactly.
Okay. I'd like to wait, and just from like a high schooler's perspective on all the technology changes and everything.
Yeah.
In terms of like standardizing, seeing how where everyone is based-wise, I think it's fine K through eight to standardize many technology classes, introduce everyone's technology so they have opportunities for it. But once you get to the high school requiring technology classes, I personally have never had any interest in computer science.
Oh, you mean the graduation requirement?
Not just that, not just that, but like saying that, like, that type of stuff and then, but like, there are computer science classes and there are kids who love computer science, who don't have the, you know, the resources or classes available to them to really go and do something else that they may be more interested in. And also with the Chromebooks, I think, they're useful up to a certain point where as Google Classroom and all the Google things are fantastic for collaboration, but when you talk about what you're going to be using in college, I'm not sure how prepared. Because Google Chromebooks can only run a certain number of programs, they can't run very much. And especially once you get into the science classes, when you're looking at stuff such as even Excel, Google Sheets is good for some stuff. But if I'm looking to analyze anything in my physics or chemistry labs, I'm not using Google Sheets, I don't touch it, I go straight to Excel. I think that's sort of the way things are, especially like my physics class, we don't touch the Chromebooks. We have our own set of computers that are older, but at least they have Excel in the programs that we can run. And the Chromebooks, I think, are good for like an English class where you can collaborate with a teacher and that sort of stuff. But in terms of the science, math, that type of technology.
When you're talking about, Tom, you're talking about a much higher level utilization, right?
Yeah, well, like K through eight, I think the Chromebooks are great, so the teachers can easily communicate with the students, that's really good. But I think for, that's only good up to a certain point, is what I'm trying to do.
You need to get different laptops for the high schools.
Well, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying like, the.
I know what he means, I know exactly what he means.
There is a valid argument that people are saying that, you know, Windows is the business operating system of the world.
So use it, right.
Right.
Yeah, and it seems like we're, at least at the high school, it's, Windows is really being, in a way, phased out by Chromebooks because I haven't been to a computer lab in my classes, as long as the Chromebooks have been around in the high school. I've been to a computer lab like twice since my freshman year. And I think around my freshman sophomore year was when Chromebooks started coming more and more. I haven't been to a computer lab since, the only thing I've done with Windows is my physics class and chemistry. I mean, when I was doing chemistry, I didn't know how to do anything in Excel. Luckily, my dad did because he's in finance, so he uses Excel all the time. So he taught me how to use Excel, but no one else knows how to use it. I don't know if that's something we can solve at the K through eight level, looking at it that way. And taking kids, not necessarily with the Chromebooks, but taking them to one of the physical computer labs where they don't have Chromebooks, they have Windows and hard PCs, to teach them how to use the different spreadsheets, Excel, Word, PowerPoint, to be more advanced in technology. And, I mean, the computer labs, some of them, there are like two good computer labs in our high school right now and then. Those are the ones that you can book as a teacher and two of them are good. The one that we have for music theory and digital photography is good. But then the ones, if you wanna use Word or Excel or anything like that, most people have to use computers in the media center, which are, like, you come in and if you have first period study or second period study and all the computers are turned on, you're gonna be sitting there for 25 minutes just waiting for the thing to turn on and then another 25 for it to log in. And then you have to wait for everything to start up. So if you're using anything like that, it's just a process getting onto the computer and then once you need to know how to use the programs on there. And if you don't, then you sort of encounter a problem, I think.
So this is one of the, thank you, you're awesome.
Yes.
That's great. But I think it really speaks to, I think this is something that Harry and Jody were talking about in terms of looking at the technology courses as a technology graduation requirement, but looking at the courses that require some, you know, competency facility.
Right.
And specific technology that would solve some of those issues. You know, there are kids who are interested in, you know, computer language and science and all that stuff. But the use of it as a tool, as a way to collaborate, as a way to create, those are the things that are not, I don't know how, how those things are articulated as curriculum. Yeah, and I think that that's what you're saying, that as you get older, you know, the Chromebooks are great for some things, but the farther along you go, there's a different need for tool and understanding because ultimately you wanna be prepared when you go on to the next level.
Well, you're doing more advanced.
Exactly.
Activities, so your point is?
Well, not just for advanced activities, I mean, for any chemistry or physics lab. I'm in AP physics, but even the accelerated physics kids this year, I'm sure are using the software on Windows and Excel and everything else.
But then when I say advanced, and I don't mean to interrupt you, I wanna make sure you understand, I mean, you're at the high school level doing high school level coursework, whether it's accelerated or it's AP, you're still doing accelerated work. Whereas you've got kids who are in sixth and seventh grade who aren't doing that same level, so that's what I mean.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like, the Chromebooks are fine for that.
Right.
But if the purpose of school is to prepare you for the next step, then I think, once you hit the middle school level, if you're preparing them for high school where they are going to encounter this more advanced level, you need to prepare, we need to prepare the kids better for that next level in high school. And if they're not prepared in high school, and especially once you get to college and beyond that, if that's what you choose to do, if you get to college and you're not good in Excel or Word or PowerPoint, because odds are, I'm not gonna be bringing a Chromebook to college. I don't think anyone wants to bring a Chromebook to college because they're not, in my mind, very useful for the types of activities that you're gonna be doing in college. If you can still access Google Chrome and Word, Sheets and Slides and everything else through a regular laptop, I think that they're just, people aren't prepared. I mean, I remember this, I think that they're just not prepared once to use these higher level things, even if it's just a higher level in high school, if you're trying to advance kids up to the next level and that's what you wanna do is prepare them for the next level, I think a lot of kids at the high school level are not prepared for the technology that they're going to encounter there.
And there you have it.
Thank you very much.
Tom, thank you so much. We need your perspective.
So in addition to the teachers being on that survey, maybe the students should be on that survey?
Well, and we can talk about that too at another meeting, but we haven't reached out to the students yet. We've only reached out to the staff and the teachers, so let me put that on my goals too.
How would it be to modify the teacher one?
To modify it for the students, well, it's a different audience and we wouldn't be asking them the same things, but we could do a much, it would be a much skinnier down version of it. But I think the district does a student survey.
Different schools do different surveys of kids.
All right, so we.
But there's nothing that's specific every year.
So we would be doing it from a school committee perspective, okay, yes. All right, Tom, thank you again. Lynn?
I have a couple. George, thank you for offering to do the program analysis thing, but when would you do it? Is this before the budget date?
Poor George.
No, no, I just think, I think it's part of our budget discussions, if there was a particular program that you wanted more in-depth analysis to have, that had various parts of it, different parts of the budget, so if you wanted to focus on.
So you want us to pick and choose, which one do you want?
Well, I think realistically.
Can I say something?
Sure.
So if you think the budget spreadsheet, you can't just say, these are them and let's re-break it down.
Right.
It's not that easy at all.
Right.
And when you do a program analysis, in my opinion, you can't just say, I only wanna do this program and that program and start double counting things because that's very annoying. You can't say, you know, you have to say, okay, well, this is part, it's incredibly complex conversation on what you wanna see. And if you can't articulate what you wanna see, there's no way you can see it. You know what I mean? So it's not like go do a program analysis, it's what programs do we have? How do we want it broken down? You know, how are we gonna make sure we don't double count things? How are we gonna split things?
Is that true?
I'm just telling you from a fizzle, like, from a fizzle.
Philosophical.
No?
Philosophical?
Yes.
You're welcome.
It's not like a go do. It's a much more.
So, so I think your point is, if we're gonna ask anybody to look at anything programmatically, even ourselves, I know I'm gonna get there.
I have my hand up.
But you, oh, you know this woman. That we would be specific about what it is that we're looking for rather than.
You can't do, it's like, it's like, I want ice cream.
Exactly.
My flavor, we know that.
Kathy, please speak.
But to this point, you don't have to break everything out mathematically. This is what, one of the roles, if you will, a budget book would play to explain the programs.
You can do it, so there's a cumulative and then there's a qualitative. And if you just, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like, if you wanted to, if you want it to be like verbose, George has already talked about trying to do something like that, you know, right now. But if you want it mathematically, it's just the way I would.
No, but in terms of it.
So you agree with that part.
People will understand programs if they have a summary of the program and they understand, not just the summary, but a couple of.
We've got enough of the tech committee discussion here, but go ahead, we can wrap this up.
I totally agree with you.
To bring it to that point, and then the numbers sort of back it up. This is why we need boom, 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 boom.
Right, I totally agree with that.
But that would be part of what a budget book could do for this.
Like, so a simple budget book, like, our next step would definitely be that step. And then the step after that would be trying to really, really tie the numbers.
So what do we want?
See, I look at it.
So what do we step back, wait, 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 okay. We're all over the place.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's just two minutes a while ago.
And this is great discussion, but is this a topic we need to put onto the next agenda?
Okay, you have to do that.
And if it is, what is it?
Can I just ask one question?
Okay, answer my question first. So if, because I wanna, I want this to happen and we all want this to happen, but when and what the heck is it?
And how much do you expect for this year versus next year versus the next?
So this discussion, no, this discussion, we're going to finish this.
Who's finishing it?
So this discussion is about the programmatic approach to the budget, but that doesn't mean the whole darn budget, right?
It could, depending.
Oh, let's look to George.
It would take years to get there.
Right.
I think that's, I think that's the point.
Be strategic about it.
Right now, we don't have a program-based budget.
Right.
Theoretically, we could redo our entire budget into a program-based budget, that's a huge job, okay? But you could do it, and some people find it valuable, some people found it not that valuable, okay? So this year, I am going to try, I have to get, I still haven't talked to Kirk about it all yet, but.
Oh, by the way, Kirk?
No, he knows about it, but I mean, he knows about it. I'm gonna try to get the presentation that I made together beyond the spreadsheet, because I know there's some frustration with that. So I'm gonna try to add the initial presentation, it'll have some narrative that will give some people some ability to reference it, an overview of what we're doing, some analysis of revenue, some analysis of expenditure, where some very basic program analysis can occur, very basic, okay? And then some possible, and this is a, this is a part I need to talk more to Kirk about, some possible longer-term recommendations, in other words, you know, looking at this almost in a multi-year budget situation. Namely, this to some extent is a bridge budget, because our leadership is transitioning, we're bridging off, you know, some non-recurring revenue. So try to make this budget work so we survive. And also then try, as a result of this budget, to have some objectives in a larger programmatic sense going forward that the community can discuss over a period of months and months and months and then see enshrined in the next budget. You know, I mean, it doesn't mean we can't change anything this year, but we certainly can. You can do anything you want, obviously, as you go with the budget. But this budget as a presentation, since I think it's gonna come out in three weeks, so, you know, I don't want to, you know, set expectations that it's gonna be, you know, that all this is gonna be there. Doesn't mean you can't endure budget deliberations over the six weeks after that, decide whether you wanna add this or anything else, okay? And I'm not saying you can't do it, of course you can do that, all right? But I just wanna set the expectations and realize that it's a, some of, you know, some we can do right away, but we can't do it all in six weeks or nine months.
Right, right, so it's unrealistic.
Right, so we're phasing into it.
That leads to my question.
Oh, please ask your question.
So, Dr. Bates?
Yes, sir.
I believe, if I recall from the resume, that you actually teach the budget process. And this is the theoretical elephant in the room that no one has approached. How long does it take? I've heard, I've heard ten years, I've heard in a year you can get it done. What, I mean, realistically.
How many resources?
I mean, because we're, we're just throwing, we're throwing mud at the wall, you know, I mean, realistically, because we don't have one, right? But I look at like Concord Carlisle, I look at, I think it's Sudbury, and I look at really easy to read, understandable, layman's terms, and you know where you've been, where you're going, you know, where we are.
understandable, layman's terms, and you know where you've been, where you're going, you know, where we are. How long?
You have to start really, I mean, your budget year starts on July first.
Mm-hmm.
And usually, the administrative team will start during that summer, getting everything together, so that when all the administrators are back in, in September, usually, I've been through my initial budget process with at least five meetings with the administrative team by the end of September.
Okay.
So, and then, you know, once you have all that down, and then you're looking at putting in your narrative type pieces, uh, after you've already done your needs assessment, needs assessments have to be out there, and I always go back to looking at your mission, vision, values, and goals, and does it fit? It's got to fit.
Mm-hmm.
And then, bringing it to your financial subcommittee, whatever you have, getting some feedback from them. And then, we've always done a budget workshop, which is a workshop.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, where we sit and go through the budget book, line on and by line, and by line, and by line, and by line, and by line. And the school committee, every member of the school committee can ask questions, and, and, you know, you're knowledgeable. Um, also, and I, I know it's different with the regional district, but also meeting with the finance committee. We send out to them, they have their input, they send us questions before our meeting, so they understand, so they can be supportive at town meeting. And, um, and all of that is done, and usually, my budget had to be in by the Friday before Thanksgiving.
Wow.
Wow.
This is a municipal.
Right, a municipal one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Municipal, alright.
But still.
And even on the regional side, AB Regional, their budgets are in by January.
But the dis, each town, I mean, when you were, met with Lancaster, and, and your timeline showed when we anticipated getting them the budget, which was like the end of February, on your, on the-
The flow chart you mean?
The flow chart. Right, but they would, they thought that, I mean, we, we have to conform to what the town's need. There are three of them, not this one, but they seem to be full of that.
The regional agreement says March fifteenth, so that's in the timeline.
Right, but in terms of meeting with them?
They would like the information that's reached hospital, like, in December.
Right.
They said they would like the information in December. So, that, that's what my attempt to make, that would be very helpful for them.
That's not a big one.
Yeah, this is the end of December, it says finalized budget.
And so, once you put that framework together, or that template, does it become easier the next year to be able to sort of plug and play? And-
Yeah, it, it, again, depends on the need. I mean, if you're going to go back to a zero-based budget, or whether, whether, you know, it's, you know, a service-based budget.
Right.
If you're just adding one, and it's also the input that you're getting from your finance committees and your towns of, where, where do you think your growth is? How much, how much of a growth are you looking at?
Mm-hmm.
And that's why I've always, you know, done the needs assessment first, so I have a bigger picture of saying, okay, and then doing a priority list.
Mm-hmm.
Of, alright, this is where we, we're at, if we add this in, this is X amount, percentage increase and so forth. And so, and then that's up to the school committee, where they want to start those cuts.
Mm-hmm, okay. Alright, thank you so much. Let's just start from my head.
Lynn, another question, to bring you back to IT. Neil, you said something that concerned me, um, as you were talking.
Of course I did.
I know. And we, we're, we're in a rush to get technology out there, and it bothers me that we don't seem to have a plan. And what bothered me about what you said was, it sounded to me like there was a dependency on technology, because you said if the technology is, means a quarter of it's down, then the kid is sitting around waiting, waiting for it.
No, that's not, that's not what I'm saying, but if the teachers are using, if the, if the SAMR model's coming out, and there's, and this is the discussion that we have, if the, they're putting the SAMR model, which is blended learning, right?
Yep.
So, i- it's a combination of both. We saw the presentation on November eighteenth that was made, and so, you can imagine, if you're spending the class, this is my impression, you're spending the class doing a collaborative measure, um, through whatever it is, uh, you know, Google, whatever. And that suddenly goes down, or you've got a problem that's, that's going on, you, you've got to wing it now. And that kind of throws a monkey wrench into the, the whole thing. So, what I'm saying is, this digital learning initiative is not something that somebody just thought one day, hey, this is a good thing, we should just suddenly do it for the district. This is a mandated thing from the DOE, and there are guidelines, there are places that we need to be. We're not where we should be a hundred percent on everything, um, with that path now, at this point. But, as these things are rolling out, my concern is, do we have a plan, not just the digital learning plan, but everything that's going to support that together? Or are we just going to, you know, because we don't want a willy-nilly thing?
No, and I agree, but what I don't want to hear is, I don't want to hear that learning didn't happen because technology went down. And that, that would bother me a lot.
Well, that's, that's part of the rationale that they're putting for this, but again, there's so many fa, moving factors in this programmatic and everything else, like Kathy's saying. But yeah, I mean, that's, that's part of the rationale that they're saying, with having the one person per school, so that they can actually be there, so it's not two days out of every six cycle, um, you know, and it's quicker for the-
But this is, that's, that's their, that's their recommended wish list, right? This is what they believe they need in order to be effective, is that right?
They had quite a few things on, that weren't on this list, that were, if they could, this is what they'd love to have in a perfect world.
So, does George have this list?
But this, um, it, uh, yes, Cynthia Larson has this, it's Google, it's part of the tech-
I actually have it, and I was like, sorry, I hadn't seen it before.
Yeah, I mean, it's, everybody, it was disseminated to everybody on the list.
It's not in the budget request, just sort of, you know.
Yeah, no, 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 it's not, it's not in the budget list, and this is something, this is something that I initiated, when I was talking with them in the last meeting that we had, said, we're coming up with all this, what do we need to make sure that it succeeds in conformance of the DIP? And I should put a wish list together and prioritize that, as to what you think is critical and so forth. And this is the list that was put together, and the number one thing that they emphasized, and they all voted on it. Took a secret ballot or something, and thought that the personnel was the most important thing for the, of all of the technology requests and this and that, and even more so than PD time, um, because it makes more impact.
But not money, personnel, but not money?
No, personnel because of the name.
Personnel, I'm talking about, I'm talking about, like, additional personnel, hiring additional personnel.
Yeah.
Alright, yeah.
Okay.
And I have one more.
You do, okay.
Sorry, and it's, it might be for another day, but George, you brought up clustering. And I don't know what that has to do, and, and what you actually said was. You were talking about the technology plan, you talked about clustering grade levels.
No, I said, I said the technology plan has a cluster of grade levels, like, grade one to three, and gives the basic skills they want.
The standards, um, in a cluster, across grade levels.
Okay.
Oh.
Okay, maybe in the future, we can talk about clustering?
Yes, we can talk about clustering in the future.
In the future.
Yes, you can, because I don't know what you want to talk about.
And the concern for the K through, for the third grade up, is when MCAS two point O morphs, it's going to become PARC-like, which is going to require computer skills.
Right.
And my understanding was, they just did keyboard analysis with some of the third graders, were not quite there where we need to be. But not horribly off, either. But that's a big concern, if you follow any of the digital learning, um, one of the leaders was Burlington, and the superintendent there had a great article he put out about his major concern about PARC being a computer test, and kids at the third grade level not being able, keyboarding skills is one thing, but being able to actually convey the thought process through the keyboard on that, takes a lot more training than just knowing where to-
That's the, that's the learning piece.
It's the digital literacy piece.
Right, right, that's right, yeah.
That just might be it.
Alright, I think we need to kind of move on. If any have, anybody raises a hand, I'm going to run out of the room. No, and you don't feel that you can't ask questions, that's not it.
I guess not, hopefully.
But I'd really love to let Dr. Bates get to his superintendent's report.
Oh, okay.
Would you like to have five minutes to speak?
Well, it's only been three days. It'll be very short. Um, on January fourth, I attended the educator evaluation meeting here, uh, to hear the update on the district's pilot program. And, uh-
Which pilot program, Kurt?
The educator evaluation system.
Oh, 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 sorry, yeah, okay.
And where they're going to be making some adjustments and so forth.
Are we on track with that?
Are we on track?
Yeah, we, are we, where we're supposed to be at state level?
Yeah, there's some questions about, um, whether the state's really going to push for the surveys and, and the DDMs and so forth.
Okay.
And since, um, I'm responsible for doing the mid-year evaluations of all the principals, um, and I've only seen them for a few days, uh, what I'm basically going to be doing is looking at their, um, their goals and objectives, and meeting with them, and just, um, evaluating them on where they are in their progress for this time, I, I don't know what else I can do for them.
It's documented.
It's documented, so. Uh, Mr. King and I met on January fifth to review the preliminary FY seventeen budgets, we're still going to continue to do that. Uh, attended the policy subcommittee meeting today, and, uh, and we had our first leadership council meeting, and, uh, Mr. King provided the FY seventeen budget update for the administrators. Uh, and Ms. Conti reviewed the new restraint training mandates that came out on Jan, January first. And Ms. Visco provided an update on the educator evaluation, uh, results from the committee. And, um, the schedule for the educational process, I reviewed that, of the process, the, uh, that I'm going to be meeting with the administrators this month. DESE will be coming here, uh, during the week of February twenty-second, to conduct an, a, a data audit. And the D audit is being conducted to address the increased need for accurate and reliable data to strengthen its effective use towards student achievement. Among the data points that they'll be looking at will be the IEP information, Title One, tuition codes, enrollments, uh, status of students, attendance in alternative education.
Is there anything we need to be prepared?
You'll be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Is there intent, partially just so they have good statewide information?
Yes, that's correct, making sure everything's in place so that-
We just want to know we have good data.
Yes.
We'd like to just check that things are going well.
Right. On, uh, January fifth, I accompanied Dr. Graham to the annual Worcester County Superintendent's Association Scholars Luncheon, which was held at WPI, and we're pleased to recognize and congratulate the Shobwa Regional High's, uh, scholars this year, who are Hannah Stevenson and Jesse Duggan, and, uh, if you want, this is the brochure, and their pictures are in here.
Oh, nice.
It's very nice, and they did a really nice job, and, uh, all the scholars have to choose a, a specific quote, which I thought was really interesting, that both of them are known to themselves. Both, uh, their quotes dealt around, uh, being, um, having kindness and being good people.
Oh, that's awesome. What are the quotes, can you read them too?
Sure.
Yeah.
Jesse's was, kindness in words create confidence, kindness in thinking creates profoundness, and kindness in giving creates love.
That's wonderful.
Do, Dr. Bates, you know how we have that sliding on the website, we've got little sliding-
I've already, I took pictures of, of, um, Dr. Graham and the two girls, um, gave it to Alita, and I also sent it to Dr. Graham, and he's going to put it up, so you'll have that.
Thanks so much, that's awesome.
So, let's hear the next one.
And Hannah's was, uh, no matter what happens, be good to people, being good to people is a wonderful legacy to leave behind.
And that, and that was a quote from-
And that came from Colleen.
Colleen Ritson.
Ritson.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow.
Well, Hannah had Colleen Ritson in that.
Yeah, she did, yeah, she said that.
So, that is something to be really proud of.
Very nice, so, um, this is here for you, you can go through and see all the scholars, so it was, it was a nice one.
That's really awesome.
Um, and tomorrow, I'll be meeting with the tri-town police and fire chiefs, and on Friday, I'm meeting with the town administrators. And, um, on, uh, back on December thirtieth, I met with the chair and Mr. King, we had the opportunity, I toured all of the, uh, uh, regional elementary and middle schools, spent the day there, and then this past Monday, I met with, uh, the chair and toured the high school. And the last thing, uh, um, Tim Castner, who's a high school social studies teacher, uh, he is now the recipient of this year's Kidder Award. This award was first given in nineteen fifty-two, uh, and given each year to one's, uh, college or university faculty, uh, member. And one pre-high, uh, pre-college history teacher for excellence in teaching, research, writing, and service to the profession. And the award, um, honors Horace Kidder, a teacher in Newton Schools and at Harvard, who served as the secretary of the New England History Teachers Association for a period of over forty years. And he'll receive, uh, his formal presentation at the New England, uh, History Teachers Association Conference on April fifth in Sturbridge. So, he should be congratulated for that.
That is wonderful.
Nice recognition.
So, is he nomi, how does somebody get nominated?
They get nominated, um, through, anybody, by peers or whatever, yes.
Okay, so, can we get his picture up on the, uh, website?
Can we get him?
You didn't think of that one, did you?
So, and, um, I'd ask Alita if we could get, uh, this stuff also in the paper.
Oh, wonderful. Hi, paper.
And I was like, how does, how do scholars get on here?
How do they get them?
And these recommend by peers also?
They get nominated, and their guidance counselors have to write, uh, recommendations for them, and, uh, they're basically, uh, every county superintendent's association has a scholars luncheon, it's sponsored by MASSS.
Mm-hmm.
And it's handled differently in each, um, county, and, uh, they try to, my understanding is Worcester County tries to hold it at a different college each year, they've done it at Sumsion, Holy Cross, and so forth. Um, and, um, the, I think it was the vice president of the college, um, spoke, she did an outstanding job, she really, really did, and a nice, nice job. It was nice to see the diversity of kids there.
That's awesome. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Um, any questions for Dr. Bates? Okay, correspondence, I don't know that, um, first I want to know, how is the new process that we're, that Alita's implemented for us working, where if you get correspondence, you're sending it to Alita, she's creating a, a one-to-two line overview of who sent it in, what town they're from, and what the subject was? Has anybody got any negative feedback on it?
Haven't heard of anything.
Is it working for you? Because I think we're going to keep moving forward with it, I think it's easier for people to see what they want to see. And then if they want the actuals, they can, they can ask for it, okay?
Uh, I, I, because I haven't seen it yet.
Yes.
Because I haven't, so, are we still responding?
So, if you look on your, um, if you look on the website, and you look within this meeting packet, um, at the bottom of the meeting packet, where correspondence normally is, Alita, instead of putting all of the pieces there, we're putting in description of who sent it and what it was for.
Received card, okay.
Yep, and then each of the individuals that receive communication, I would assume, are responding to those.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay. Consent agenda, um, the minutes from December seventh, eighth, and sixteenth, I hope everyone's had a chance to review them. Alita, you have my edits, they're minor, minor guys, they're just like capitalization things. Yeah.
Um, I have a suggestion, there's one where we had a, I guess Lynn was telephoning in, and we need to have all of those votes, which happened to be only the adjournment vote, um, by not, you have to list all of the members who voted. It happened the vote was unanimous, but we actually need to say the names, I forget which day it was. It was, um, I think it was just the workshop, I think, for-
Is that the seventh? Seven, three?
The eighth one, they're individual. The eighth are adjourned.
Now, but do, do we do a vote on the seventh? I don't know, we voted adjourned.
That was just a review of the questions, right?
We did, we went through the, uh, interview protocol.
Yeah, it's just an open meeting thing, you actually have to state the, everyone's vote when you have a calling in person, so we should have a mess.
Oh, I didn't know that.
A lot of that.
But there was, there was no vote on the seventh, do you still need, do you need to vote to say that I was on the phone?
Well, we needed to.
A vote to adjourn.
Vote to adjourn.
That's the one, okay. I mean, I don't know one of those, I wasn't here then. What did you say? I wasn't here then.
Well, that's Frank.
Is that my turn to say that?
Yeah.
What you can't say is that you're new.
No more newness.
I wasn't here that night.
So, what do we do, we vote?
So, what do we do?
And what is the vote structure?
If we're unanimous, we can actually write out the names on those seven minutes, that's all.
You know, you know.
Just a modification of the minutes.
Can you make that change, just list our names and say-
Then we all voted in favor.
We all voted in favor of a journey.
Yeah.
It was a journey.
But it's, it's useful for everybody to know, and you have a remote person, just like executive session.
Yes.
Yikes.
And we didn't, we didn't adjourn by calling roll call?
Yeah, we just have to record it in the minutes that we-
I think we're just so happy to get out of here.
Because it's unanimous, right?
So, you'd have, you'd have to do it on the eighth, too, if you're doing it.
No, we did.
No.
Oh, tuition.[1793.74]
That was, that was.
I can assume that it was unanimous that everybody wanted to.
You have to do it on the eighth to also, if you do it on the seventh.
Yeah.
The motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
We can't re-bol, I mean, it's a technical violation, you can, you'll be all right. You correct the minutes like Kurt said.
I just corrected, that's all.
Yeah.
You have the moral, I mean, do we have to vote to correct the minutes?
No.
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 Just in the future, when somebody electronically adds their roll call.
We usually, we've done really well with that, you cannot be out anymore.
But you correct the minutes, that's essentially correcting the defect, especially.
Thank you, George.
I mean, that's what I think they would say.
Well, I appreciate that, well, don't say it and then say I don't know.
That's what they would generally say, if you had a technical violation.
So you just go back and.
You correct the minutes.
All right, so we can correct the minutes, do you want to pull those out?
Because they're official.
Okay. Other than that, any questions, any issues on the warrants, assuming not, because it's under consent agenda? So we are good to go with that, Alita will revise the August eighth, no.
Seventh and eighth.
Seventh and eighth.
Yeah, I called them both days.
Okay. Items to be considered for the next agenda, okay, so we've got, the thirteenth is the superintendent's search workshop at the MAS. Nicole's got a few policies that we need to do for first reading, which we will add. We're going to, Kurt's going to share with us a couple of samples before that meeting on the type of work that MasBo does. So I think we're going to, at six o'clock, we're going to do Nicole's policies, the MasBo, quick discussion and a vote on if we decide we want to move forward with that, okay? And then with the bulk of that meeting is the workshop, okay?
For a future meeting?
Yeah.
At a couple of, at the policy meeting today, and we were talking about restraint policy a couple of weeks ago, I asked questions about where the protocols reside for the teachers to refer to. And I think George would mention that there's a handbook, a teacher handbook, that is part of teacher negotiations or something.
I think you had a couple of things I said mixed up.
Whoops, probably wasn't that. Straighten it out.
No, I said there is a online check-off that staff gets each year that includes.
The mandated training.
The mandated training, which includes all the policies.
Yes.
Plus the, in, in the past has included restraint, and will continue to include restraint.
Yes.
I think what I said was, we have a draft employee handbook.
Yes.
But before we could implement that handbook, we'd have to at least impact bar.
Okay, but here's my concern, having done many mandated trainings half-heartedly or after five years, you just sort of, no, it's different than you do for them. I want to, my concern would be that teachers have access to the protocols that support policies like the, the life-threatening food allergy or the restraint training, things like that. Because if there is a problem, parents are going to want to know, how do the teachers know what to do? Where is it, if it's part of that staff handbook, that's fine, but I, that's my concern, that you look at it at the beginning of the year, when you're doing your mandated trainings, and you're so busy with everything else, and you just want to get that paper signed so you don't get the memo from HR saying, where's your mandated training thing?
Well, we just put them up on the HR website, that way they can refer to them.
That would be great, but, but to make teachers aware that that's what.
They would, they would, tell you. We'll say all the policies you signed off on the first week of school are all available in each of them.
But I think the protocols are more important to the teachers than.
Unless they mean all the, all the documents, and all the documents you signed off on.
Because that came up today somewhat, than out of the teaching.
That's not going to satisfy that issue though, because we have a situation now where, here we are in the middle of the year, and we're looking at protocol change because of if the policy is accepted with the change that's in there. And if that protocol change is done, that needs to be disseminated to the teachers. In addition, the five oh fours need to be amended so that they don't say, refer to the policy, but the specific protocol is actually put into the five oh four, as I understand it, for the individual child. It can't say, refer to, because each child has a specific need, for instance, allergies, latex peanut. We were talking about this today, it's, it's all over the board, and so they need to be, the specific action item needs to be in there because you don't need allergen-free, for instance, if this goes forward, because allergen-free means everything, right? Just the specific issue you're stating.
But we, but we can, when we make that change, we can just notify everybody about that, and then we can update the website with the thing.
So do you need to put this on?
Yeah, but the five oh fours are not conforming, they're not, they're not conforming right now with the.
I'm.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. No, I just want to make sure the teachers know where the protocols are, in case somebody asks.
Okay, so the January twenty-eighth meeting, folks, because we're not going to be doing a whole lot of business at the next meeting, the calendar committee is going to be presenting its recommendations to us. I'd like everybody who is, actually, I need all the subcommittees to present where they are, their mid-year progress towards goals for the subcommittees, so that gives you two or three weeks. Our, on our overarching school committee goals, we've, we're, we're doing very well, considering the amount of work that, that we've kind of had to take a detour on over the past couple of months, but we're doing well. But each of the chairs of the subcommittees, please be prepared to present where you are on your mid-year goals. And Alita, epidemiology, we have a presentation from two of the high school teachers who'll be bringing students in and sharing some of the work they're doing in the epidemiology class.
Wow.
Isn't that cool?
I think that's awesome.
So to that, or and, remember this document? This is the calendar?
I remember.
Okay, so I need everybody to look at that document. We didn't get, I mean, it was aggressive as it was, and over the past two months, we haven't really been able to do a whole lot. So I'm going to throw out a couple of things from December that we missed, and January, and see where your thoughts are, and then Alita, or Kurt and George and Alita, if, if this makes sense. So a couple of things that we were interested in hearing about were baseline edge scores on K eight writing programs, Atlas Rubicon writing, curriculum units of study, and again, we need to be really thoughtful about which one, which one or two of these we'd like to hear. Are these things that we're still interested in?
I think because the writing program was in the district improvement plan, we wanted to, by a, an update.
Right.
So I don't know who would present it and if they're prepared to present it at the.
Well, at the end of the month.
Whatever.
At the end of, well, I don't know, I mean, we can always move it into February, but I'm just saying.
But I think that that's why it's there, because it was part of the district improvement plan, it would be good to know.
Well, that's why we're doing this.
Right.
So, so is this one of the, is this a one, two, or three priority?
One, that was a, that was a goal.
Okay.
I think if, if it's a district improvement plan item, I think.
And most of these are, all right, so that's how this was created? By looking at the district improvement plan, so, okay, so that's a one. Because we're not going to be able to do it all, we've got all this budget work to do, sped, sped, sped update.
Can't there, can't we just get like a report out rather than have a presentation made for all these things? I mean.
We actually could have a report out on any, I mean, a report, yeah, put, absolutely.
Rather than dragging teachers in, you know, having them come in in the evening, I mean, it's just, it's an inconvenience if there are things that we can just get.
We don't need, no, no, I want to know the topics, we'll go back and we'll figure out what the best format is, but I want to know the topics. If we're going to put together, unless you want to just leave it to me and I'll pick the topics, I'm good with that, but.
Well, I, because my question is, and, and I'm not trying to beat that horse or anyone, so I'm sorry, but if this is district improvement stuff, and we're supposed to be, that's one of our mandates, we need to know where each and every one of those things are.
I know. I know. So what I'm asking you to do, which is what we all should have been doing anyway, is looking at this calendar and identifying we've missed a couple of months. So we have not been able to.
Right.
To review, we haven't been able to look at the documents that were put in the, in the packet.
So far.
So, don't do that, it's rude.
It is.
But I think what I'm trying to ask you is, of these ten or twelve things that we needed to have done in December, how do you want to prioritize them?
It might be helpful if we had the complete list, and maybe, do we have to do that tonight? Or is it something that we could, you could send.
You have this whole document.
Someplace, I do.
You have it in your pocket.
Yes.
And I've highlighted the ones that seem the most critical.
Wait, you have it in this packet or the old packet? I'm just more cloudy.
It's in the packet.
It's in tonight's packet.
It's not in tonight's packet.
Ah ha, you put it in tonight's packet. I sent you the email.
I didn't get any email from you.
With a link?
So is it possible just?
You spelled my name wrong?
I'll send you the link, I'll, I'm sorry, I swear to God, I said, can you please put this in the packet? Okay, I'll send you the link and I'll give you my list of prioritize suggestions, okay?
I think that would.
And we'll go from there.
That would speed it.
I figured everybody had it in their packet, my bad.
That's why we were looking at you fun.
So do you, do you want to cover that next week?
We're not going to talk about the subjects next week.
Just the, just the prioritized ones, that's next week.
Right. Wow, that was my bad. We're done. Please, now, anybody have anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Can we please have a motion to adjourn?
Is that the agenda?
We already did that.
We already did it.
It's the second time today you missed that.
I know, I'm just trying to get on board with the whole thing, that's all.
I think Lynn made a motion to adjourn, and I think Mark will do something to it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Neil, you in favor?
I am.
It's unanimous.
I want to stick here all night.
You do? Apparently Kurt does, too, thank you, Abby.